Good evening and welcome to the City of Tuscaloosa zoning board of adjustment. For the record, today is September 26, 2022. My name is Robert Ennis and I'm chairman of the board and I'll ask the members to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Michelle Coley.
Rob Stewart, vice chairman.
Linda Ford.
Andrew Robertson.
Thank you. We're also joined tonight by our excellent staff. We have Mr. Will Smith, Associate Planning Director, who is going to be leaving us moving, moving up to code, code enforcement. Thank you. Well, congratulations, Will. Good luck to you. We have Ms. Emily Hayes, Neighborhood Resources Coordinator. We have Ms. Angie Terrell in the back, Administrative Assistant. From the Office of the City Attorney, we have Mr. Oto Twa Macomo from the Department of Infrastructure and Public Services. We have Mike Garner, Associate City Engineer. We have Kevin Jones in the back on video production and TV. And we also have Mr. Jonathan Bowen with us, who is a, a new planner, well, you're not really new, are you, Jonathan? Planner with the planning department. Now, this is the zoning board of adjustment of the City of Tuscaloosa. This board does not enact zoning ordinances. That is not in our province. That's the city council that does that. Now, the board does have three areas of jurisdiction. The first area is hearing appeals from the zoning officer in regard to any matter on what she has asked her opinion, or his opinion. And anybody aggrieved by that decision may appeal to this board. We don't have any of those cases tonight. The other one is a variance. Now, a variance is when the application of, the literal application of the zoning code would create a, a situation of extreme hardship. And by that, I mean a situation where it is difficult, if not impossible, to use the property with, for any purpose within that current zoning classification. And I believe we have one or two of those cases tonight at the end of the docket. The other area of jurisdiction of the board is special exceptions. Now, a special exception is a situation in which the city council has, in the zoning code, prohibited certain types of activity, and then they would, they'll say, provided, however, this may be granted a special exception by the zoning board of adjustment if it meets certain criteria. And that is what short-term rental is. The city council passed an ordinance allowing short-term rentals and established the criteria for it and said that the zoning board of adjustment is now responsible for applying those criteria to anyone who participates petitions for such a special exception. Now, those are the three jurisdictions of the zoning board of adjustment. Now, I will spare you the definitions of variance, but in regard to subdivision regulations and homeowners association rules, those frequently come up because many of them prohibit short-term rental. That is a matter privately between the act, the person and the homeowners association. It is not something that this board, or in fact, the City of Tuscaloosa can enforce. So homeowners association subdivision covenants are not within this board's jurisdiction either. Okay? Now, we had sign-up petitions out front for anyone who wishes to address the board to speak. However, if you did not sign up, that is not a problem. We will allow you to speak if you will simply raise your hand and come to the podium. Now, this, this is a public hearing. It is being recorded. It is being televised. It is on Facebook. It is on the web. It is everywhere. So please, please be civil and courteous to everyone. When you are coming to address the board, speak into the microphone and speak closely into the microphone, because these are real close contact mics. Speak into the microphone and address only the board. Don't get in discussions with the staff or with any member of the audience. Just tell us what your opinion is, and the board may or may not ask you questions in regard to that. Now, we will be using a timer, Ms. Hayes. We will be using a timer, and you'll see the timer on the screen behind us. So please do that, and remember when you come, give us your name and address. Otherwise, we will be on the timer, limiting everyone to three minutes. And if you are representing someone else other than a family member, you have to have a designation of agent in writing that you will provide to the city staff before you may speak. But if you're speaking for a family member, you do not have to have that DOA. Now, I will ask the staff, has the City of Tuscaloosa provided all the notice requirements for each case on the docket tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, the procedure we will follow is that a member of staff will come to the podium and present the case to us. It will contain parts of the city code that are relevant. It will contain site plans, drawings, maps, location maps, photographs, and anything else the staff feels would be edifying for us to make our decision. Now, after the staff makes their presentation, then the petitioner or representative of the petitioner will come to the microphone, provide any additional details and/or answer questions from the board. After that, then any member of the public who wishes to speak for or against the petition may come to the microphone and, guess what? Give me your name and address, speak directly to us, and tell us, please, everyone, watch the timer on the screen behind me. Now, we will be watching everything that you see on the screen behind me. Excuse me. Will appear on our screens as well, so we're seeing what you're seeing. Now, there are a few procedural things you need to be aware of, is that while you see five of us up here, it takes four affirmative votes to approve a petition. Not three, but four. That's a matter of state law. So it takes four affirmative votes to approve a petition. Another thing you'll notice is, we don't do motions and seconds in regard to approving a petition. I will read every motion in the affirmative. There will be no second to that motion. And then, once the motion has been read, I will include any conditions that may be necessary for that petition. Then, we will have a period of time just before that where each member of the board comments on the case. Now, the reason for that is because the record of any case can go up to the circuit court on appeal if you file a notice to appeal within 15 days of the decision by this board. To go up on appeal, there has to be a transcript of our proceedings. So the circuit court can look at the transcript and understand and define the legal issues that are now before the court. The court uses comments from the board to understand how the board perceived the issues before on a given case. We will do that. Typically, we will start with Vice Chairman Stewart, who will frame the issues and the facts for us, and any member of the board can add to that or disagree with Mr. Stewart's statement, but we're doing that for the record, just so you might, you know. And as I said, any appeal, from any appeal by anyone aggrieved by a decision of this board, may appeal to the circuit court, and I say this for the record, pursuant to Allen Code Section 11-52-81, Code of Alabama, 1975. Now, I'll ask all members of the board, having reviewed the docket of cases tonight, if anyone has a conflict or an interest they wish to declare. Let the record reflect, no one had a conflict of interest. I understand there are some changes on the agenda. We have some continuances that we will do first. Excuse me, I'm stealing your agenda. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Smith. Mr. Twa Macomo, did I, I forgot, did we have any report on any cases?
Same number of cases last time. One, one case on appeal.
Is it non-jury?
Non-jury. It's the ZF and Y, CV 2022-000089.
Is it SDR or what?
Bed and breakfast, the Wood Manor case.
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Smith.
All right.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Sure. Just before we get into framework, the sister cities room is just outside this room. There is a table and chairs and a television that'll have this meeting. So if anyone here would like a seat or a little extra room, that is an available option. So at the beginning of each meeting, of course, we're going over a quick update of framework. Our last meeting was September 7, 2022. We touched on a few things. First, the higher density, single-family residential, four and five. So you can kind of see what, single-family residential, four, small, medium lot, medium density. And just kind of a, a drawing and a chart there. You can see townhouses are in the, the image there to your right. Some setbacks, smaller setbacks for smaller lots. Some of the comments identified in the meetings, a lot area minimums need testing, the front setbacks are going to be too small. If they have front entry garages, needs to at least be 20 feet. That would allow an actual car to be parked in the driveway within that setback, because typical parking space is 20 feet long. And the side setbacks should be reduced to five. So that's stuff we're talking about in the future as well. So SFR five, very similar, little bit higher density, a little bit smaller setbacks. And you can see there, of course, this is all available, framework.tuscaloosa.com as well. Some notes here, two of the same notes that we had with SFR five there. Oh, we also looked at non-conformities. This is an important one, as the zoning board of adjustment certainly knows. We refined some of our current provisions and added some others. So for those who don't know, the purpose of non-conformity is, a lot of stuff was built before the current zoning ordinance and its regulations were enacted. So as a matter of law, it is legal, however, non-conforming. So you don't have to remove it, but it does not conform to the zoning ordinance. So there's non-conforming uses. There's structure, non-conforming lots. And then, non-conformities created by imminent domain, for example, if a road or something is to be proposed, some of your lot along that road may be part of imminent domain, and your lot is smaller, therefore, non-conforming. Signs and billboards, now, we haven't gotten into that, because we're going to do signs and billboards later, so we'll get with the non-conformities of signs and billboards when we do that.
Go, go back one screen, please. Is this going to solve our, our current problem? I don't think that it is.
Well, part of what will solve it is the SFR four and five, is that areas that have smaller lots today will be zoned to where smaller lots are not legal non-conforming, and they're actually be meeting the zoning ordinance. But this is just kind of getting into the types of non-conformity. You'll see, the details of that will certainly seem to solve.
We're going to, we're going to deal with that issue.
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah. The last thing we want to do is come in and have an entire area of the city non-conforming because of the zoning classification that was put on it like we have today. And we, we also looked at definitions. Of course, we won't go through all these, but this does refine and does modernize definitions. Most of our definitions, probably 80% of them are from 1972, so we've had to kind of go through an update. Also, you can kind of see the structure here, the term on the left with the definition there. That's what that'll look like. The next meeting is October 5. You can see we're going through a few things there as well. Again, framework.tuscaloosa.com will have everything for public participation as well. I understand the board is wanting to continue this one more time through the October meeting for the updates on the rules of procedure.
Yes, that's correct. The committee, subcommittee to, to review those changes has met. We just need to get them to you at the next comments meeting, to staff, and then get them printed and distributed amongst the board.
Okay, great. Do they need a vote on that? Okay. All right. And then, skip that. Cases requesting to continue, ZBA 10422, the petitioner is here to request the continuance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeff Henthorn, 3025 Fremont Drive, and requesting continuance to next month. We've got some cabinets that are on back orders, and it's taking a little longer for us to get our kitchen squared away.
We have some people who have signed the petition on 10422. Mr. Clyde Biggs. Yes, sir. Did you hear what the request was, Mr. Biggs? The, the request is to continue the case until next month. Petitioner's not ready for it to be heard.
Next month?
To the next, next month hearing. Yes, sir.
And what is this?
Pardon?
We're redoing our kitchen, and our cabinets haven't been.
Is that okay with you? And I can't read this other one on Fremont Drive. Do we have anyone else who signed up?
3026, 3026 is the house address, I believe.
Okay, okay. That being the case, I will entertain a motion to continue ZBA 104-22, the petition of Jeffrey and Chelsea Henthorn for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 3025 Fremont Drive, Zoned R1.
I make a motion to continue.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Voting with Ms. Coley?
Aye.
Yes, to continue.
Yes.
Yes.
That case is continued till next month.
Thank you.
Say yes. I said aye.
I believe we have another case.
Yes, sir. ZBA 11522, and the petitioner's here as well.
Good evening. I'm Leah Alexander with Alexander Architecture, 5520, 10th Court East, Northport, Alabama, representing the owner. We request a continuance to allow additional time to coordinate with city staff and the building official regarding the logistics of this project.
That's, that case will take some time. It's pretty complicated. The more y'all can work out the staff, the better.
Yes, sir.
Better for everybody concerned, I think.
I just wanted to ask one quick question. Are, are more buildings going to be considered, or is it still going to be the same buildings that we were?
Initially, the, the initial plan is the additional eight, the initial eight buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to continue ZBA 11522. Leah Alexander's petition for a use variance to allow cottage court duplexes on property located in 30th Avenue East, Zoned R2, RD2, Council District 5, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to continue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Calling, voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 That case is continued. Mr. Biggs, if you wish to, you can leave. If you wish to, you can leave. Okay. Okay.
So we will start with our first cases we heard tonight. So ZBA 9522, this was continued from last month's meeting. Vicki Grodner is petitioning for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 77 Circlewood, Zoned R3, Council District 6. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, then a closer aerial view of that property. A view from the street. Likeable regulations. This is a new short-term rental request. The house is two bedrooms and two bathrooms. No violations or complaints. The request is for two vehicles and four adults. If approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. Do I have any questions for staff?
Any questions?
We had four written comments in opposition. A couple of them were from last month. A couple were just recenting them in, but Ms. Grodner is here.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Grodner. I live at 721 Queen City Avenue. I also own HNG Property Rentals, 1490 North Bank Parkway, and I'm representing Ms. Kim Howland in her interest to have a short-term rental on a property she has purchased at 77 Circlewood. Any specific questions?
Is this, is this home empty?
It, it is. She, yes, she purchased it because she is an Alabama alum and was here this past weekend, but yes, she has purchased it for her use and would then would like to occasionally use it as a short-term rental.
Okay, so it's not occupied?
No, like she was there this weekend, but no, no. She's, yes, she's back in California now.
Any questions? More questions, Ms. Grodner?
Ms. Grodner, just tell us a little bit about your experiences with managing short-term rentals.
So I'm a Realtor with Keller Williams, and my own house, 721 Queen City Avenue, is, is a short-term rental occasionally. I live there. But I have a handful of clients that I have sold properties to who have then asked me to begin to secure licenses for them. So we have just begun that process, but, but I've been renting my own house and doing that for a number of years and have other short-term rentals in other communities as well, so.
In your capacity representing these clients, will you be the management company?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of staff people, but yes.
So they're on call?
The buck stops with me, yes.
So on call 24/7, no matter what the issue is?
Correct. That is exactly right. Yes, yes. We have a, a single number for the business as well as my personal number that everybody has, and that single number goes to three different staff people 24 hours a day.
I got a question. Ms. Grodner, can you, what has been your experience with a home that is not occupied in a community versus like your own personal home that you rent out? Have you seen any difference or the effect on the community?
I, I have not. I have not, ma'am. I mean, we check on these properties. I have a, again, a young woman that works for me, and, and as we're beginning the process, we're checking on properties on a weekly basis just to make sure that everything's in order and, you know, so we, we do frequent checks of the properties.
Ms. Grodner, can I ask approximately how many properties that you manage? You don't have to give me a definite number, but just an idea.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing about six right now, so, and we have some other ones that are in process, so.
Are all of your properties or most of your properties not owner-occupied?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Ms. Grodner? Thank you, Ms. Grodner.
You're very welcome.
Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? Let the record reflect, we had no one? Anything further from staff? Nothing further from staff. We'll begin our comments with Mr. Stewart.
Just a question for staff. Is this the same case that we continued last month where we did allow the neighbors who were present to speak? Okay. So this panel, the body before you, the board, was here last month. Ms. Grodner had to continue last minute, so there were, so, just for everyone's benefit, there were several people who came and spoke in opposition from the neighborhood and also the email, so we have heard from the neighborhood. In saying that, we are familiar to some degree with Ms. Grodner. She, as she mentioned, has a home on Queen City, which is her home, that she's had as a legal short-term rental for several years. We haven't heard, to my knowledge, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, any issues at that property. And Ms. Grodner, to her statement, is a licensed Realtor-in-state and is managing other properties with the staff and is here in the, in town as a resident. That being said, with that experience, I can see no reason to deny this application with the, I'd like the following conditions to be in place. It would be a maximum of two vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of four adults for a one-year probationary period, which will include a total of 30 nights over that year period.
Ms. Coley, do you have any comment?
In seeing this as well, I see that, I want to make sure that we address that the people that came in last month, we hear them and what their situation was, and we advise them that if they have any issues with the property owner or with any type of short-term rental, that they call 311 and make a report, because when it comes up for renewal, that's what we look at if there are any complaints or problems that have been logged. That helps us make the, the decision about renewing of the property, so that's what we will be looking for. And also, is that the city council has said that owner has the right to do short-term rental in their, on their property. And so, we as the zoning board, we are determining if there's no complaints previous to them doing this rental, then that's what we're going on, is that they have the right to do it. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Ms. Coley. I, I might add that the new short-term rental, as, as Mr. Stewart alluded to, is put on what we call a probation. That is, your first year, you get it for one year, 30 nights a year. And as Ms. Coley said, when you come back to us in a year, we review your record. We review all police department reports, fire marshal reports, and any complaints that have come into 311 or directly into the planning staff or the office of the city attorney. So anyone that has any problems with STRs, there's a mechanism for you to build that record and help us in enforcement. Otherwise, I agree with my colleagues.
I just wanted to add that Ms. Grodner started off when this very first began. I think she was one of the, in the first meeting to discuss short-term rental. And as far as I know, and have checked, there have been absolutely zero complaints through 311 or through any other mechanism with the city on any of the properties she has managed. With that and following the ordinance, I, I don't see any reason to deny this. With that and following the ordinance, I, I don't see any reason to deny this petition.
I agree with my board members, I'm in favor.
Thank you, that being the case, the motion is as follows, in regard to ZBA 95-22, to approve the petition of Vicki Grodner for a special exception to allow the short-term rental property located at 77 Circle Wood, Zoned R3, Council District 6, subject to the following limitations. A limit of four adults, a limit of four vehicles, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year, accessory structures may never be occupied at any time, any business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it was two vehicles, four adults, two vehicles.
Oh, did I say one?
You said four.
Oh, excuse me, four adults, two vehicles, thank you.
Four vehicles.
Okay. Thank you, that is the motion, voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 That petition is approved, next case.
Moving on to our next case that was continued from last month, ZBA 9622, Vicki Grodner is petitioning for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at 1010 Myrtlewood Drive, Zoned R3H, Council District 4. Here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property, just off Bryant Drive. View from the street. applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request, the house is four bedrooms and four bathrooms, no violations or complaints, the request is for three vehicles and six adults, if approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. Y'all have any questions for staff? We had three written comments in opposition, and Ms. Grodner is here.
Any questions, Ms. Hayes?
Nope.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Ms. Grodner?
Vicki Grodner, 721 Queen City Avenue, and I apologize, it was American Airlines that had me not here last month, I certainly would have been here if I could have. The property at 1010 Myrtlewood, I just want to give you a little bit of background, maybe that will help with some questions. The owner's daughter was living there, who was a professional with the University of Alabama, she actually works in the program that does study abroad, and she lived there with her husband, and they recently have moved out because she's likely taking a position elsewhere, so, it's possible this house is going to go on the market for sale, but in the interim, the owner would like to be able to offer it to others as a short-term rental. He does use it himself on occasion, but again, his daughter's really been living there up until about three weeks ago, so.
Any questions, Ms. Grodner?
So you stated the owner, which is the father?
Yes.
And he is there sporadically?
Yes, yeah, he comes in occasionally, they live in Birmingham, his wife is a physician, and he runs her medical practice, so.
Ms. Grodner, have you related to the owner that the staff recommendations were four adults and two vehicles instead of?
Yes, of course.
Just by way of explanation on, on the vehicles, as you can see from the pictures, there's that portico chay with only room for one vehicle.
Correct.
Thank you, that's it, and I know there's a big parking area in the back, but only one vehicle can get in and out, and so that triggers the only two vehicles, because otherwise you can't stack vehicles.
Of, of course, yes, sir, yes, I always explain that to my owners, but then I always defer, just to the extent I can, to what they ask as well, so, yes, sir.
We appreciate that. No other questions, Ms. Grodner? Thank you, Ms. Grodner.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? I know we've received several emails in opposition to this petition, and we do already have one STR in this neighborhood, is that right, Ms. Hayes, one? All right, any, okay, no one wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our comments with Mr. Stewart.
Yep, again, Ms. Grodner just explained her client's issues and their intentions with the home. Ms. Grodner, as she stated in the previous case, is a professional Realtor who manages this, and her, or would manage this if it passes, in her current portfolio of, of short-term rentals, which again, offers 24/7 local assistance if there are any issues with the family or home, or, you know, God forbid, the police were called or something of that nature, there is someone here to address that. As it was stated in, by city staff, the driveway limits, for those who don't know this, if it's a single-lane driveway and more than one car has to be backed out to allow another car to get out, which is stacking, that would limit, in this particular case, is a prime example of a maximum of two cars, which in turn, limits the number of adults, so just so everyone's clear with that moving forward. But, based on Ms. Grodner's experience here, and what she's described to us about the homeowner and, and their intentions, I'm in favor of granting a one-year probationary approval with a maximum of 30 nights in that calendar year, with two vehicles maximum to be parked off-street, and a maximum of four adults.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Coley?
I agree with a fellow board member.
I, I agree as well.
I agree, and also want to add that there is another building on this property, and I want to make sure that it's on record that it is not as, to be used for any occupy, any occupied by any person.
I agree.
Thank you, that being the case, the motion is as follows, in regard to ZBA 96-22, to approve the petition of Vicki Grodner for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property in a historic district located at 1010 Myrtlewood Drive, Zoned R3H, Council District 4, subject to the following conditions. A limit of four adults, a limit of two vehicles, a limit of 30 nights, a limit of one year, accessory structures may never be occupied at any time, any business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 That petition passes, next case.
Next case is ZBA 122, James A. and Julie B. Moreau, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property, 1125 14th Place East, this is Zoned R3 and Council District 5. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial overview of the property. Here we have a closer-up of that aerial. Here we have a map that shows other active short-term rentals in the general area. Here's the primary structure on the property. And the applicable regulations, so this is a short-term rental renewal, the house is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, no violations or complaints were received for this property, they were previously approved for three vehicles and six adults for 30 nights a year. The current request is for three vehicles, six adults, and 45 nights per year, if approved, staff recommends the three vehicles and six adults. We did receive one comment in opposition to this petition.
If I recall, Mr. Bowen, though, that comment, we couldn't tie to this particular STR operation, is that right?
So, that was last month, now, this comment that was submitted was specifically saying that they were against short-term rental parking, as in parking on the street, so, I clarified with the person, I didn't get a response back, but I just went ahead and sent it to y'all anyways.
All right, and this is the second one on that street, not the, this is not the third one, this is one of the ones you've already showed.
Correct.
So that's two on 14th Place. Okay, any questions, Mr. Bowen? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here representing this petition?
I am Julie Moreau, I'm the property owner at 1125 14th Place East. We, we had conditional approval a year ago, so I'm just back, you know, to request renewal.
And remind us of who, who the contact person is for this?
We have a, a local representative, George Johnson is his name, I included his contact information on my application, he's local, and he's very familiar with the property, and is on-call 24/7.
And there, that's a local contact, and where, where is your home?
Where is my home?
Yeah.
Oh, I live in Louisiana. We've owned this property since 2013, I think.
Okay.
We spend a good bit of time up here.
Ms. Moreau, when, when your house is not being short-term rented, is it empty, or is it occupied by?
It's, if we're here, if we're in town, it's occupied by us, otherwise, it's, it's empty, we keep it on an alarm system, so we're aware of any comings and goings.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Moreau?
Did you rent the property this, in your initial year, for short-term rental?
In this past year?
Yeah.
I think, we had one rental, but it was like a two-month rental, so it wouldn't have even been subject to the short-term conditions and rules.
So as far as a short-term rental use that you were previously approved on, you didn't end up in the last calendar year renting it?
Not in this calendar year, last fall, we had a couple of short-term rentals during the fall.
Okay, how did that go?
Oh, it was fine, there were no issues, no problems, no complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Moreau? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Do we have anyone here, you can, you can add, do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? Let the record reflect, we had no one, we'll begin the board comments with Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, based on Mrs. Moreau's comments, that she's had it in the program, in the last 12 months, she didn't rent it in that capacity, in the short-term rental capacity, but did the prior fall, and had no issues, I can see no issues reported from staff, from any of the, the mechanisms that are used to, to bring them to our attention. Based on that, I think, moving forward, I will be glad, glad to propose for approval a total of three years under the license, with a total of 45 nights per calendar year, with a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street with six adults.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Coley?
I agree with my fellow board member.
I do as well.
I agree.
I agree as well.
That being the case, the motion is as follows, in regard to ZBA 100-22, to approve the petition of James A. and Julia B. Moreau for a special exception to allow short-term rental of property located at 1125 14th Place East, Zoned R3, Council District 5, subject to the following terms and conditions. A limit of six adults and three vehicles, a limit of 45 nights per year, a limit of three years, accessory structures may never be occupied at any time, any business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 That case, I mean, that petition is approved, next case.
All right, next case is ZBA 10122, Nathan Lowen, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district, this is located at 1713 7th Street, Zoned R3H, and Council District 4. Here we have the zoning, as well as an aerial of the property. Here's a closer-up image of that aerial. You can see we have a number of short-term rentals active in this general area, I believe this will be the first or second on 7th Street. Here we have the applicable regulations, so this is, this request is for a new short-term rental, the house is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house, there's no violations or complaints received, the request is for one vehicle, two adults, if approved, staff recommends one vehicle, two adults, we did not receive any public comment for this application.
Any questions, Mr. Bowen?
Can you go back to the street, or to the driveway view? Please? Do you have a driveway view?
Was there a street view?
I didn't see one.
We had one, yeah. There we go.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, for the curb cut, we can't see fully to the left, I don't know if that's an adjoining driveway that's bricked as well, that's adjoining, okay, so there's one curb cut, one parking pad for one car?
Okay, correct.
That's right.
Ms. Grodner, is that, is that right, or are there two pads?
No, there's only place for one car. There's only one parking space on that lot.
If you go to the aerial, you see the property line.
Sure.
It just looks like there's one just beyond it. Okay, all right, that's the property line, okay, any other question, Mr. Bowen? Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone here representing this petition? Yes?
Good evening, my name is Nathan Lowen, I'm a resident at 1713 7th Street, and the owner of the property.
Have you ever engaged in short-term rental operations before?
No.
Who is going to be the contact person in the event of an emergency?
I will be.
Where are you going to be?
I'll be staying in the city, but with friends, or have like, sleepovers or something.
You understand you can't stay here.
I cannot stay on the property while it's being rented, is what you're saying?
Right, you cannot stay on the property.
Yes, I do understand that.
You understand that, yes, okay, and when the police need to get in touch with you, or the fire department needs to get in touch with you, you will be able to, they'll be able to get in touch with you, and you will be able to come to the property immediately.
Absolutely, I'll be 10 minutes away, and I have perimeter cameras as well.
The, the reason I'm asking is, is, well, I get, the parking is our major limitation here, the one vehicle.
Right.
Although you do have three bedrooms and two and a half baths. Any other questions?
I just want to clarify that the pad you see on the other side is actually on the other residence's pad for parking.
Yeah, that is a rental property owned by someone who does not live there, there are often three 4x4s parked in that driveway.
Any other questions, Mr. Lowen?
Mr. Lowen, is there a new structure, accessory structure in the rear of the property?
Yes, I'm building a workshop there right now.
Okay, you do know that cannot be used for any, as a dwelling of any sorts, okay?
Understood, yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Lowen? Thank you, Mr. Lowen, thank you, do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our board comments with Mr. Stewart.
Just so, for everyone's benefit again, and on the parking, as everyone can see from the street view, there was one off-street park, even though parking is obviously tight and limited in this area, there are legal designated spots on the street for the purpose of short-term rentals per the ordinance, even though it's legal if you're homeowner to park on the street, just so everyone knows, short-term renters are not afforded that right, they are only allowed in this capacity for a use to park off-street, so I just want to make that clear, so everyone understands that. But, based on Mr. Lowen's comments, he is a new short-term renter, per his statements, he will be in town, readily available 24/7, if there are issues on this property as the contact, and, based on that, we don't have, I don't believe, any comments at all on this area, and this is obviously a very densely populated area around, around campus as it stands, I'm in favor of granting a one-year probationary term to include a maximum of 30 nights over that calendar year, and the maximum of one car to be parked off-street, and a maximum of two adults.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Coley?
And I'm looking at this and realizing that, you know, we take great efforts to make sure that the neighborhood maintains its character, and by imposing that they have to park off the street, that one car, because the house is much larger, you saw the previous one, we approved six adults and three cars, but this, so each case is looked at as how it affects the neighborhood, how it's going to affect what happens in that area, so that's why we're doing two adults and one vehicle on this, so I'm in agreement with my fellow board member.
Thank you, I agree with my colleagues. Thank you. Uh, I agree with my colleagues.
I think it's very definitely a reasonable request, and I agree.
I agree as well.
Thank you. That being the case, the motion is as follows. In regard to ZBA 101-22, to approve the petition of Nathan, Nathan Lowen for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property in a historic district located at 1713 7th Street, zoned R-3H, Council District 4, subject to the following terms and conditions. A limit of two adults, a limit of one vehicle, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year, accessory structures may never be occupied at any time, any business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Petition passes. Next case.
All right. Next case is ZBA 102-22. Bama B&amp;B, Kim Roberts, petitions for a special exception to allow for the short-term rental of a property. This is at 1732 St. Charles Way, zoned R1, in Council District 5. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial overview. Here's a closer-up image of that aerial overview. So we're specifically focusing on the right side of the structure in the image. Here are the applicable regulations. This is, uh, short-term rental renewal. The house is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom. There were no violations or complaints received for this property. They were previously approved for three vehicles, six adults, 30 nights per year for one year. The current request is for three vehicles, six adults, 45 nights per year for three years. If approved, staff recommends the three vehicles and six adults. We've received no public comment for this application, and the applicant is here in person.
Any questions, Mr. Bowen? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here to represent this petition?
Hello, we're just searching for a renewal on this property. I'm Kim Roberts.
Ms. Roberts, was the garage ever used to park a vehicle? Do you know?
Uh, I think some guessed it. It's empty. The owners do not live there, so.
Okay, so it's, it's empty except for short-term rental?
Right.
Do you know how many short-term rental nights were used on this property last year?
I don't. I haven't added it up.
But your, your firm managed them.
Yes, yes. I didn't.
You don't have that information?
Got over 70 properties.
Any, any other question, Ms. Roberts? Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? That being the case, we'll begin the board comments with Mr. Stewart.
We're well acquainted with Ms. Roberts. For those of you who don't know, she's the largest, um, renter or manager, largest management company in Tuscaloosa of short-term rentals. So we have, she's come before this body numerous times on representing her clients in petitions. Um, based on the, uh, history here, we've had no complaints, no comments, um, no violations reported in the last 12 months. Um, I am comfortable knowing how Ms. Roberts works and her availability and her staff's availability to grant, um, the renewal for a maximum of three years, a maximum of 45 nights per calendar year, and a maximum of three vehicles parked off-street with a maximum of six adults.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Stewart. Do we, uh, Ms. Coley?
I agree with my fellow board member.
I do as well.
I agree.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. That being the case, the motion is as follows. In regard to ZBA 102-22, to approve the petition of Bama B&amp;B for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 1732 St. Charles Way, zoned R1, Council District 5, subject to the following conditions. A limit of six adults, a limit of three vehicles, a limit of 45 nights per year, and a limit of three years. Accessory structures may never be occupied, and a business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley?
Yes.
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 Next case.
Next case is ZBA 103-22. Bama B&amp;B, Kim Roberts, petitions for a special exception to allow for the short-term rental of a property located at 2009 14th Street East. This property is on R2, in Council District 5. Here we have that aerial overview, as well as the zoning of the property. Here's a closer-up image of that aerial. Here is the view from public right-of-way. Here's a better shot of that driveway. Here we have the applicable regulations. This is also a short-term rental renewal. The house is four-bedroom, two-bathroom. No violations or complaints were received. The previous approval was for two vehicles, four adults, 30 nights per year for one year. The current request is for two vehicles, four adults, 45 nights per year for three years. If approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. Uh, we did not receive any public comment for this application. The petitioner is here in person.
Any questions, Mr. Bowen? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we, uh, Ms. Roberts?
This is also a non-owner-occupied property, so it's.
Is, is, help me with my bearings here. Am, is this just off Kicker Road?
It is. Yeah, to the east of Kicker Road.
Sort of behind the loft, that?
Yes.
That area? Okay, that's where I thought, okay.
Very quiet.
Was this a property that they were gonna do some renovation on the driveway?
They had talked about widening the driveway, but.
They, they didn't?
They have a daughter here in school right now, so they use it a good bit on their own, and it just hasn't been necessary.
Okay, but it is the one I remember that they were, okay.
They wanted to widen the driveway.
Checking on memory. Thank you.
But after, after the delay on it, they decided to just wait.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's see. Two vehicles, not gonna be a problem. Any other questions, Ms. Roberts? Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our board comments with Mr. Stewart.
Um, similar to the last case, uh, Ms. Roberts is petitioning on the behalf of the, uh, landowner, property owner, for a renewal. Um, you know, per staff's recommendations, we've had, um, no issues, or staff report no issues or complaints received. Um, no one has, from the neighborhood who's been notified is, is here to weigh in as well. So based on that, and knowing Ms. Roberts and her company's, um, track record to date, I'm in favor of, of following staff's recommendation for a renewal for a three-year period, um, with a maximum of 45 nights per calendar year in the three years, and two vehicles parked off-street, and a maximum of four adults.
Ms. Coley?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Thank you. That being the case, the motion is as follows. In regard to ZBA 103-22, to approve the petition of Bama B&amp;B for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 2009 14th Street East, zoned R2, Council District 5, subject to the following conditions. A limit of four adults, a limit of two vehicles, a limit of 45 nights per year, a limit of three years. Accessory structures may never be occupied at any time. Any business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley?
Yes.
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 That petition is approved. Next case.
Next case is ZBA 105-22. Sunshine Friday, petitions for a special exception to allow for the short-term rental of a property located at 1985 Woodridge Road. This is zoned R1, in Council District 3. Here we have an aerial overview of the property, as well as a zoning. Here's a closer-up image of that aerial. Here we have a map that shows one other active short-term rental in the area.
Go back to that. Go back. I thought we had another short-term rental up on, in Riverdale, just on Second Avenue.
So the one, there's one right next to it, Second Avenue. They, from what I could find, didn't renew for the 2022 year. But they were approved back in 2020 to allow short-term rentals by y'all.
I thought they did, would you? They didn't?
So they came back and renewed, um, I misspoke in the way. They didn't renew their business license. They didn't pull a license for 2022. But they did renew for three years.
Okay. I thought, I thought they did. Okay. All right, that answers that. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Bowen.
And here's that view of the house from the street. And we have a closer-up of the driveway on the house or on the property. And here are the applicable regulations. So this is a new short-term rental request. The house is four bedrooms, two bathrooms. Uh, they were advertising on VRBO without approval in 2018. The request is for four vehicles and eight adults. If approved, staff recommends three vehicles and six adults. We did receive one public comment in opposition to the case, and the applicant is here to speak in person.
Any other questions, Mr. Bowen?
So you said in 2018, just that time, or moving fo, it's been on there since 2018? So it was just in 2018. They called it in 2018, and they did take it down within the year.
Could we go back to the photograph of the second driveway? Not that driveway, the other driveway? We, we had one, a street elevation one.
I think we may have only had this.
No, I, I. Mr. Garner, did we have one? All right. Because if I recall correctly, that was a gravel driveway. Is that correct? Is that correct, Mr. Garner?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, the, the view that you looked at earlier was off of Google Street View that, that showed the driveway off Second Avenue.
Well, right. Well, when I, I drove by there, uh, it looked like a curb cut and a paved curb cut, but it looked like slag beyond that.
That's correct. It, it is, uh, they have a small curb cut, it's concrete, and then the rest of the driveway is gravel.
There you go. That's what I'm looking at. And that's just recently paved. Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. And... Mr. Garner, that curb cut on the left, is that the code?
I think the view is somewhat distorted. Uh, the, the curb cut looks to code. The, the gravel driveway is not to code. Driveways are supposed to be a durable surface, paved or concrete.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here to represent this petition?
I'm, uh, Stephen Friday, the husband of Sunshine. I live at 1985 Woodridge Road, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35406.
This is your house?
Yes, sir.
Did you get a permit to cut that curb?
Yes, sir.
Not according to our records.
I, I did. I got approved. Yes, sir.
Well, we've been looking for it. We can't find it.
Okay.
Did you, you get it inspected?
Uh, I was, I called and asked, could I cut the curb? And they said, yes, just don't cut it straight across from the neighbors where they back out, because you can't have two, two driveways, people backing out at the same time.
Did they give you a piece of paper that says curb cut permit?
I don't know. That was years ago. I don't, I don't know.
Well, that looks like new concrete to me.
I, I can promise you that was years ago. That curb, that, that driveway has been there a long time, at least six years, five to six years. I've lived there. Uh, my oldest daughter is 15 now, going to be 16, and...
Mr. Chairman, I, I, per Google Street View, it does go back to 2014, and it does show, uh, the driveway existing. Um, we'll have to check our records, um, in the engineer's office to see if there was a driveway permit.
Well, that looks like, that looks like new concrete to me. I mean, and I'm no expert. What, Mr. Garner, did you?
Bob, on, on this picture is new concrete from 2014. This picture's from 2014.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's why it looks new on this picture.
Well, when I drove out there, which was the other day.
It looked new still.
I, I saw a lot of loose slag and gravel instead of a paved driveway. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's gravel. Yes, sir.
Mr. Garner? Can you have loose slag and?
Our, our city ordinances are that driveways are to be paved, not, not gravel, but paved.
Okay. And Mr. Hinton, uh, so in 2008, you were advertising this property on V-Bro? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Friday, I'm sorry. I was in the wrong case. You were advertising this property on V-Bro?
Uh, yes, sir. My wife was.
Did you ever rent it for short-term rental?
Uh, yes, sir. And then we were told not, that we couldn't do it, so we stopped doing it.
Did you have a place in the city of Tuscaloosa that you stayed when you did rent it?
Ma'am?
Did you have a place that you stayed in the city of Tuscaloosa when you did short-term rentals?
No, ma'am. Sometimes we would either go to the camp house, out of town, and, uh, but I always had, like, my neighbor, George Stevens, to call if, if we need somebody to, uh, you know, if the police come and they need, need to get somebody there if I can't get there. And my neighbor's straight across from where that car is, pull out, I, I keep them on, you know, was keeping them on call if I needed them.
Do you have any problems with, uh, renting it, short-term rental?
Uh, one time, when we were told to take it down, we said, they said we had a complaint, so we took it down. And my wife went before, I don't know if it's y'all or the board, I, I wasn't hit there. And she did her probation, and then she, she, we have not done it since.
Do you recall what the complaint was? Was it noise?
Uh, I think she said that, uh, that my neighbor right behind me, George Stevens, he rents, and then there's through the woods, and Riverdale's another, another, another neighborhood, but it's through the woods. And I was told that there was a neighbor back there that complained about loud music. But I, I didn't, nobody confronted me and said, hey, will you take care of this? We were just told, hey, you can't do that, so we took it down.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, where's this camp house?
Livingston, Alabama, Boyd.
Now, that's a good hour away. What are you gonna do when the police want you there right now?
Get in the car and come back, or call George Stevens and have him go over.
Where in Livingston?
Do you know where Boyd is? Right outside of Bo, uh, Livingston, where Boyd is.
On Highway 17?
Uh, yes, sir. Off County Road 12.
Yeah. You back in the woods there?
Uh, no, sir. It's right off the road.
Okay.
I mean, considering being in the city, yes, sir. We're not, we're not in a city.
No, you're not. Any other questions? Oh, excuse me. Well, I'm, I was gonna say, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Friday? Thank you, Mr. Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we, I believe I have someone sign up. George Stevens, 1806. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
And you were the case we were just talking about.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. George Stevens, 1806, Second Avenue Northeast. I have no issues with Mr. Friday, uh, doing this. And like he said, he knows he can call me, because I'll either be at my house or over in Academy Drive at my mother-in-law's. And I'll have to follow up with you about the business license issue, because I got one.
Did you get your business license?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, because you told me you have been, and now you're wrong.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
Your home is where?
Uh, right behind him.
Right behind him?
Yep. The house directly behind him.
Okay. And have, how long have you lived there?
Oh, six years now.
Okay. During that 2018 period, that works into that, uh, six years. Okay. During that 2018 period, that works into that, uh, six years, did you ever experience any issues when he had rented it then?
Nope.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against this petition? And we'll begin our board comments with Mr. Stewart.
Starting with the driveway, the driveway with the curb cut and the gravel, um, is city staff going to address that?
Yes, we'll be looking into that.
Okay, so y'all follow up with the property owner on that, okay. Um, based on, uh, Mr. Stevens' comments, being a neighbor, being in law enforcement, a budding neighbor during the time where, uh, Mr. Friday did rent it, and then was, was told he needed a license and hasn't, you know, take it off VRBO, um, based on those comments, I can, leaning to agree for a probationary year, can you go back to the, um, aerial of the driveway? Even though the home states to be, um, large enough, good-sized lot, lot size matters too. Lot size typically that are larger help buffer noise and things of that nature from neighbors, so that's a plus. But this ask is for four cars off-street and eight adults. Even though the house may accommodate it, I think all we should consider is the legal paved driveway at this point. And all I'm comfortable with there is a maximum of three cars for six adults. So that being said, Mr. Friday, this is a probationary year, um, be mindful of that. You've got a good neighbor, it sounds like, who watches your home, but be very mindful of that. And no parking whatsoever. City will address your current parking situation on the gravel side off Second. Um, I'm in favor of granting a one-year, uh, probationary year for a maximum of 30 nights in that year for, uh, three cars and a maximum of six adults.
Ms. Cole. You want me to go?
No, um, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, six, six adults and three cars. Um, this is one I think we need to look at and really kind of watch and follow up with and make sure. I'm just, yeah.
Okay. I have reservations about this one. I've been out there several times and looked at it. I'm not comfortable in approving an STR with what I consider to be an illegal driveway, and it was obviously, it was being used. When I drove by there, that's an illegal driveway, and I don't think we should grant a permit to a property where it is not in full compliance with the law. I'm also not comfortable with, uh, the petitioner being in Livingston as a contact person. That is a good 60 miles away in good traffic. And I don't want the police and the fire department or whoever else is having a problem, or neighbors surrounding there, having to wait for him to get, them to get in touch with them and get back there, back there, so I, I have strong reservations about that. At the very least, I would want to continue this case till next month until the driveway situation is, situation is resolved and the contact situation is resolved. Otherwise, I'm opposed to this petition.
Um, I also am, um, not in agreement until the driveway's taken, uh, care of and it's paved and/or concreted, and the, the fact that he had already a short-term rental without a license to begin with, and, um, and there was one complaint, I, I will have to agree, uh, with my chairman.
Um, I'm in, actually, I was in favor of the petition, however, um, I can't see the point with the chairman in this board. But I am in favor of the petition.
Okay. That being the case, the motion is as follows. In regard to ZBA 105-22, to approve the petition of Sunshine Friday for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 1985 Wood, Woodridge Road, zoned R1, Council District 3, subject to the following terms and conditions. A limit of six adults, a limit of three vehicles parked off-street, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year, accessory structures may never be occupied at any time, and a business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you, you mentioned, uh, the option to continue. Do you, would you like to ask the petitioner if he's?
I didn't see any indication by the other members of the board.
Okay.
Desiring to continue, so we're voting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Voting with Ms. Coley.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
That petition fails. Next case. Okay, Mr. Bowen.
All right. Next case is ZBA 106-22, Sherman Smith's petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2012 Sixth Street East. This is zoned R4 in Council District 5. Here we have an aerial image as well as the zoning of the property. Here we have a closer-up image of that aerial. Here we have a view of the house from the street. Here are the applicable regulations. So this is a new short-term rental. The house is three-bedroom, one bathroom. No violations or complaints were received. The request is for three vehicles and six adults. If, if approved, uh, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. We received no public comment for this case, and the petitioner is here in person to speak.
Any questions to Mr. Bowen? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have the petitioner here? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tamara Smith. Um, I reside at 11581 Live Oak Drive in Tuscaloosa. And I'm here on behalf of my husband, Sherman Smith.
Who lives in this house?
No one lives there.
It looked like relatively new construction.
Yes.
Just been built?
It had been renovated.
Is it gonna be rented any other kind of way, or are you just looking at short-term rentals?
Just looking at short-term rental right now.
And are you the owner?
Yes, my husband and I, yes.
Any questions?
Do you have any experience with short-term rentals?
Not short-term, but we have another property that we have tenants, um, but not short-term, but we have had tenants before at a different property.
So will you and your husband or one of the two are both be in town and present while it's being rented?
Yes.
Okay. And would you be available 24/7?
Yes.
If anything happens? Y'all would be the primary contacts?
Yes, we both will be, yes.
Have you, at this point, put together rules and regulations for the house, for your renters?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and those are posted, or will be posted?
They will be posted, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any, excuse, just a minute. Any other questions?
No.
You don't? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our comments with Mr. Stewart.
Per Mrs. Smith's, um, comments, she has some experience with rental properties in a long-term nature. Um, this is, she and her husband's first venture into short-term rental management. They live in the community, per her statement, will be available as a contact, you know, barring there's an incident of whatever type. Uh, based on that, um, and were there any comments from neighbors?
No.
None written? Okay. Um, based on that, I'm in favor of granting a one-year probationary period. And per staff's recommendation, based on the driveway, single-lane driveway, for a maximum, one-year period probationary, maximum of 30 nights in that year with maximum of two vehicles parked off-street and a maximum of four adults.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Uh, Ms. Cole.
I agree.
I agree.
I also agree.
I agree as well.
Thank you. That being the case, the motion is as follows. In regard to ZBA 106-22, to approve the petition of Sherman Smith for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 2012 Sixth Street East, zoned R4, Council District 5, subject to the following terms and conditions. A limit of four adults, a limit of two vehicles, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year. Accessory structures may never be occupied at any time. Any business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 Next case.
Next case is ZBA 107-22, Reginald Vines petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2604th Street East. This property is zoned R3 in Council District 5. Here we have an aerial of that property as well as the zoning. Here's a closer-up image of that aerial. Here's a house from the street view. And a closer-up image of the carport and garage. Here we have the applicable regulations. So this is a new short-term rental request. The house is three bedrooms, three bathrooms. No violations or complaints were received. The petitioner stated that two cars can fit in the garage, and then there would be one located in the driveway. The request is for three vehicles and six adults. If approved, staff recommends three vehicles and six adults. Uh, we have not received any public comment for this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person.
Uh, Mr. Bowen, uh, let's go back to that gar- garage issue. That, that garage, all right, if, if I got one vehicle in that garage, it looks like a single-vehicle garage, does it not, Mr. Garner? Have you looked at it?
I've not been to this site to look at this one in person.
Looks like one vehicle to me. What about the, the width of the driveway? Is that two vehicles wide?
I think it's marginal.
Well, go back to the, where the truck is parked. Where the moving van. Yeah.
If you look at that photo, the vehicle is centered in that driveway. There seems to be a fair amount of room on the east side or the, the far side of that, that box truck.
So you're saying two side by side, you think?
I think it'll work, yes, sir.
Okay. And then if we put one in the garage, if we condition it, the garage, on the garage, that's, that's where you're getting the threes.
Correct.
Y'all have any questions on that? Uh, anything from, further from Mr. Bowen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here representing the petition?
Mr. Vines?
We're not doing Zoom anymore, I don't think.
How about if we hold it to the last case, in case he had a hard time getting here like we typically do? Is that okay?
Okay, uh, we'll come back to this case, in case the petitioner shows up. Let's move on to 109-22.
We're gonna move to, uh, 108, ZBA 108-22. Davis and Minda Paxton petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 50, 4561 Royal Drive. This is zoned R1 in Council District 3. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial overview. Here's a closer-up image of that aerial. Here's house from the street view. Here are the applicable regulations. This is a short-term rental renewal. The house is four-bedroom, three-bathroom. There were no violations or complaints received. They were previously approved for four vehicles and eight adults, 30 nights per year for one year. The current request is for four vehicles, eight adults, 49, 45 nights per year for three years. If approved, staff recommends four vehicles and eight adults. Uh, we did not receive any public comment for this application. I believe the applicant is here in person.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here representing this petition? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Andy Paxton, legal name Davis. I'm here to represent my wife. This is a primary residence. We live at 4561 Royale Drive. And as told earlier, this is for renewal. We're still, uh, a month out on our probationary year, sir.
Any questions?
No, sir, except he's the only one that beat me here. You've been here since before I came.
I'm sorry?
In the room. You beat me here today.
Yes, I did. Because I was late the first year, so.
Thank you for waving.
How, how was engaging in short-term rental your first year?
Uh, we had, we had two rentals, uh, one over graduation, one over football. Uh, and again, we stayed in town as, uh, did, so I would come by and check, actually. It went swimmingly well. I mean, great reviews, uh, good experience.
And you can, we can, you can get two cars in the garage?
Yes, sir. I do it every day.
Where do you go when you rent it, when you start from rental?
We stay with friends of ours, sort of in the Lake area. We stay in the same zip code.
Okay.
Still over in S6.
And have you spoken to your neighbors?
Yeah, you know, uh, in fact, I've sought them out for, uh, inquiry. One of them wants to do this next year, so it's been a positive experience.
Did they happen to comment after you had those two experiences with renters?
Well, after the experience with the renters, I'd say, was there any issue?
Okay. We're good. Okay, thank you.
Any, any further question?
Mr. Paxton, are you looking to do more rentals this coming time when you renew?
Yes.
Well, because you just did two, so I was just wondering, like, you, you're okay with ramping it up?
Well, we didn't get our approval until October 26 of last year, which cut off a fair amount of football season.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paxton. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our board comments with Mr. Stewart.
Based on, uh, Mr. Paxton's comments, it sounds like he had a total of two separate weekends that he rented it. Um, and, you know, based again on his statements, he had no issues, he put his eyes on the property. And if I was, if it was my primary residence, I would probably be fairly guarded as well to, to engage in short-term rentals. But all that being said, there were no issues reported. He states that he's communicated with his neighbors as well after the fact, which is a good thing to do. So based on that, I don't see any reasons to not, um, grant the renewal for, again, for a total of three years, for a maximum of 45 nights within a ca- each calendar year, uh, a maximum of four vehicles parked off-street, two of those being parked in the garage, and a maximum of eight adults.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ms. Coley?
I'm in agreement.
Uh, I agree as well.
I agree.
Thank you. That being the case, the motion is as follows. In regard to ZBA 108-22, to approve the petition of Davis and Minda, Minda Paxton for a special exception to allow short-term rental of property located at 4561 Royal Drive, zoned R1, Council District 3, subject to the following conditions. A limit of eight adults, a limit of four vehicles, two cars must be parked in the garage, a limit of 45 nights, a limit of three years, accessory structures may never be occupied at any time, and a business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 That petition of, is approved. Next case.
Next case is ZBA 109-22. Mary Hancock and Rebecca York petition for a special exception to allow for the short-term rental of a property at 152994 Winds Loop. This is zoned R1 in Council District 3. So here we have the zoning of the property. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial overview. Here we have a closer-up image of that aerial. You can see there's a short-term rental, an active short-term rental right next to the property, and there's also another one in the far-left corner. Here's a view from the street. We have a better image of that driveway. Also a closer-up image of that driveway. Here are the applicable regulations. This is a new short-term rental. The house is three-bedroom, three-bathroom. There was no violations or complaints received. This request is for four vehicles, eight adults. If approved, staff recommends three vehicles and six adults.
Any questions of Mr. Bowen? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here representing the petitioner? We'll move that case to the end of the docket, Ms. Hayes? Ms. Hayes? Let's move that one to the end of the docket. We'll get back to it. Alright, Mr. Bowen, next case.
Next case is ZBA 110-22. Wayada Morrow petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 85 Circlewood. This is Zoned R3 in Council District 6. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial overview. Here's the closer-up image of that aerial. Here's a view of the house from the street. Here are the applicable regulations. This is also a new short-term rental request. The house is two bedrooms, one bathroom. No violations or complaints were received. The request is for two vehicles and four adults. If approved, staff recommends the two vehicles and four adults.
Any questions of Mr. Bowen? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here representing the petition? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I am actually here for my sister, Wayada Morrow, and my name is Charmaine Morrow.
Okay. Have you engaged in short-term rental activity before?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir. Not at all.
Do you live, is this your residence?
No, sir. I'm actually there off and on maybe about 40 to 50 days out of the year. There's no one that actually just lives there every day.
So, you live here, but you're not here most of the time?
Correct. That's correct.
But this is your residence?
My sister's...
Your sister's residence. Where's your sister?
You said, "Where is she?"
Does she, does anyone else live there at all throughout the year?
No, not at all.
But your sister's the owner, deed holder of record?
She is the owner, yeah.
And does she, do either one of you live in Tuscaloosa?
I actually, when I'm here, I'm there and at my mom's, and then also I have a home in Mississippi.
But you're not the petitioner? You didn't...
No, I am speaking on behalf of her. She is actually out of town for work, and 85 Circlewood is actually her mailing address. She does not live in state, but she is from here.
Frankly, I... Are you authorized to make any representations on her behalf?
Yes, sir, I am.
For example, do you have rules and regulations for occupancy?
Yes, sir, but she is actually looking at a management firm, so I wouldn't be over the property.
Do you know whom your sister has, currently has as a 24/7 contact person?
I do, but there has not been a contract signed, so I do not want to, you know, say the business.
Okay, so right now, there's no one, you're working to, working towards a management company to actually manage the property?
Yes, sir, this week.
My inclination is to continue this case till next month so that your sister can come, and she can tell us who is going to be responsible for this property. What we're being told right now is a little too nebulous, at least for me, to vote yes on this petition. See what I'm saying?
No, sir. May I ask you why?
I just said why. Because, one, you're not the property owner, and you're not going to be the one responsible for this operation. Your sister is.
Yes, in a sense, but she has given me authority to make any decisions about the property.
But I want to hear from her.
Okay, that's fine.
See, I want to hear from her.
Okay.
I want to hear who, I want to hear her represent who the emergency contact is.
Okay.
And so far, I haven't heard you say exactly that you're looking for somebody.
No, we actually have someone. There has not been a contract signed until we could actually get this approved. We don't want to get stuck with, you know, anything.
Who is that?
We have not signed a contract, so...
Okay.
Okay. There's still not going to be a person next month if...
So, you know, I'm reluctant to issue a short-term rental permit when there's nobody that you can tell me the police can contact when there's a loud party at night.
Okay, so I will let her know she needs to sign the contract before she gets back here to let you all know who's going to be over the property.
And Ms. Morrow, that's, we do this on cases because that's for the public's benefit, not only for your own property to have someone to do it, obviously for the neighbors there, that's a safeguard. In lack of someone being there, you know, no one's in charge. So coming back in a month would be appropriate, and hopefully that'd give y'all time to take care of that and getting that signed up, and either have her come forward or your agent, your management agent.
And she's giving you permission of what you need to sign? Has she given that to the city?
She's a family member, so she really doesn't have to have anything signed, correct?
Or family members can speak on behalf?
Family members can speak on behalf.
So she can come, she's her sister, that's her sister.
Right.
Yeah, but she doesn't know who yet.
But next month, you will know the difference.
Well, it's the thing, I know who, there's nothing signed because, you know, this is not guaranteed, so we want...
Well, before we approve it, we would like to, like, we asked everybody else who's going to do it, and so we just like to know that before. Because if we approve it, and then you don't follow through with anybody or you don't have it solidified, then we've already given you the okay.
But here's the thing, let's just say if it does not go through and falls through, I can actually be over the property. I have the flexibility, as I actually work for myself.
I believe you just said you lived in Mississippi?
I have a home there.
Oh.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's a second property.
I understand, but, so when you're in Tuscaloosa, where do you stay?
At my mom's. It's about five minutes away.
You didn't say that initially.
I was actually not asked that, but I wasn't going to be responsible for the property, per se, so I didn't want to say I was a backup, but there's going to be a management company, so...
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to continue this case till next month, and y'all can, you know the information we need. We need your sister and contact, firm contact, okay? Okay. In regard to ZBA, this is 110-22. I move to continue the same until the October meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and second. Voting with Ms. Coley?
Yes.
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 That case is continued. We will take a short break here. Let's say 10 minutes. We've been going an hour and 40 minutes, so we'll take a short break of 10 minutes and come back at 10-til.
All right, next case is ZBA 11122, Ashley Martin Knolls, petitions for a special exception to allow for the short-term rental of property located at 2904 Lewis Lane. This is zoned R3 in Council District 6. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial overview. Here we have a closer up image of that aerial overview. And here is the house from the street view. The petitioners did recently put down gravel for the driveway. Here we have the applicable regulations. So this is a new short-term rental request. The house is three-bedroom, two-bathroom. No violations or complaints were received. The request is for three vehicles and six adults. If approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. I don't believe we had any public comment for this application, and the petitioner is here to speak in person. Any questions, Mr. Bowen? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have anyone here representing this petition? Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, we just wanted to state that the gravel driveway in this situation is allowed because there was gravel there previously. So this is permitted.
That was gonna be my question, because about two weeks ago, it wasn't gravel. It was just grass.
So there was a little bit of gravel there, as you can see, um, right here.
And that now that's gravel?
Right.
And that is permitted in R3?
It is.
Thank you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. It's not the zoning, it's the fact that there was gravel previously there.
There was gravel previously? Where? I see grass, I don't see gravel. What's the city engineering say about that?
Based on the age of that house, I believe this gravel drive was installed before the zoning ordinance was required, a paved driveway.
All right, thank you, Ms. Knoll, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I am Ashley Knolls, and my son owns this property, and I'm also on the house with him, as well.
So you own the house with him?
Yes.
You live in this house?
No, my son does.
Your son lives in this?
And he's at school, yes.
Have you or your son ever engaged in short-term rental operations before?
I've never done one myself, but I have been staying in one for, a lot of ones, for two years, uh, on and off, out of state.
Has your son ever done?
No, sir.
And where's your son gonna live, uh, when it's being rented?
With me. I have a five-bedroom home, um, 12 minutes away from here.
How close, or do you live to this house?
I live in Tuscaloosa with my husband, yes.
Do you have, uh, any rules and regulations posted, or does your son, for this, if you were to short-term rental it?
Yes, and I've given them to, uh, Ms. Emily as well, when I turned in the, um, application.
So if, uh, someone has a problem, they'll be calling you or your son?
They'll be calling my husband. My husband is a city employee here, and he lives here 12 minutes away, so they will contact him.
Thank you.
And I turned that paperwork in as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Knoll? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our comments with Mr. Stewart.
I think, uh, based on Mrs. Knoll's, um, comments, she is on the deed with her son, uh, lives close by. She stated that her husband, um, also 12 minutes away would be the point of, primary point of contact if there are any issues. Um, I am glad that the driveway, based on the pictures from several weeks, has been gravelled, because that was, was a concern of ours earlier in the month. So I'm glad you did do that, and, and according to Mr. Gardner in R3, that is allowed in this scenario. So, um, based on that, I'm in favor of granting a one-year probationary period, um, for a total of 30 nights in that calendar year, uh, with the maximum. It's a single-lane driveway, so it's actually gonna be based on city staff recommendation, two vehicles parked off-street, and four adults.
Ms. Coley?
I just wanna be clear with the city, it's because it was previously gravel, the reason it can be gravel, not the R3. Is that what the reason is, is that before the driveway was paved, the rule for that is the, okay. So, uh, with that being said, I'm in favor.
Uh, I, I agree, uh, given that fact, four adults and two vehicles, otherwise we'd have three stacked, and we don't allow three stacked.
I agree.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. That being the case, the motion is as follows, in regard to ZBA 111-22, to approve the petition of Ashley Martin Knolls for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 2904 Lewis Lane, zoned R3, Council District 6, subject to the following conditions: a limit of four adults, a limit of two vehicles, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year, accessory structures may never be occupied by anyone, and a business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Uh, voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 That motion passes. Next case?
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner for ZBA 10922 is here. Do you wanna go ahead and hear that, or you wanna keep it at the end?
I'm sorry.
So the petitioner for ZBA 10922 is here. Do you wanna go ahead and hear that, or move it?
Let's go ahead, is it here? This is for Win, this is for Win, I'm sorry, yeah.
It is. And I won't go back through the PowerPoint unless y'all want me to.
I don't think we need to. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Hancock, here for, um, petition for short-term, or zoning, board adjustment for short-term rental.
Uh, do you live at this address?
I do not, I do not live there.
Who lives there?
Uh, nobody lives there. It's a house that I purchased, but it's not my primary residence.
Where's your primary residence?
Uh, here in Tuscaloosa. Um, River Chase.
Do you have an address?
Uh, 930, I just bought it, uh, 937 Monmouth Drive, Tuscaloosa 35406.
And you're the owner of this property?
Yes, sir.
Have you engaged in short-term rental operations before?
Um, my family has owned and operated one for about 10 years, um, in Destin, Florida.
In where?
Destin.
Destin, okay. Uh, but you have not?
I have not.
Are you, you gonna run this one?
Yes, sir.
Had, do you have rules and regulations for tenant occupancy and use?
Yes, sir, we do.
And who's gonna be the contact person?
It will be me.
And where are you gonna be?
I will be in River Chase.
Monmouth Drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our board comments with Mr. Stewart.
Would you mind pulling up the street view of the driveway?
Okay. Mr. Gardner, on here, the recommendation was 6-3, adults, three cars?
Yes, sir. Looking at the configuration here, I, although there may be room for more than three cars to park, you would have to move more than one vehicle, so that's why we wanna limit this, uh, this STR to three vehicles.
All right, thank you. Yeah, based on, um, Ms. Hancock's comments, um, it's a home currently was purchased and is being used for, potentially used for short-term rental, and then whatever potential limited use, but it won't be a primary residence. Uh, she did state she lives in River Chase, near, you know, in, in the area, and can be, will be the primary point of contact if there are any issues, um, with a short-term rental situation. Based on that, uh, I'm in favor of granting, uh, the initial one-year, it's a probationary year, for a total of 30 nights over that calendar year, and it'll be a maximum of three vehicles and six adults.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ms. Coley?
I'm in agreement with my fellow board member.
I, I would just like, Ms. Hancock, uh, you understand we're talking about the vehicles. We don't want three vehicles parked end-to-end on that driveway. You're gonna have to park one off to the side in that concrete area, you understand? Okay. Uh, given that, I agree with Mr. Stewart.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Thank you. The motion is as follows, in regard to ZBA 109-22, to approve the petition of Mary Hancock and Rebecca York for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 15299 Four Winds Loop, zoned R1, Council District 3, subject to the following conditions: a limit of six adults, a limit of three vehicles, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year. Accessory structures may not be occupied at any time, and you must obtain a business license prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley?
Yes.
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 That petition is approved. Next case?
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner for ZBA 10722, Reginald Vines, is now here, if you want to go back to that case.
Yeah. Yes, sir, give me your name and address, please.
Uh, Reginald Vines, 1850 Old Main Street, Houston, Texas, 770.
Need to speak up, please, sir.
Reginald Vines, 1850 Old Main Street, Houston, Texas.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is this your, this, this your residence? I didn't understand what it, do you live here?
Dual residence, may say. I live in Houston, Texas.
Have you engaged, ever engaged in short-term rental activity before?
Short-term? No, long-term, yes.
This is your first time?
In short-term, correct.
Yeah. You have rules and regulations for how tenants should conduct themselves?
Yes, I've been in real estate since '09, so yes, sir.
Who is the contact person for emergency?
Erica Thomas.
Who?
Erica Thomas.
Who is that?
She's the manager of Vines Holdings, my real estate company.
She engaged in business in the city of Tuscaloosa?
Yes. She's a real estate agent here locally.
Mr. Vine says, sure, is that garage at that home, uh, able, uh, open and able to be used for a vehicle?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
So there's nothing in the garage now?
No, ma'am.
And you, that, you own this house?
Yes, my company owns that property, correct.
And what do you plan to do with it when you're not short, renting it for short-term?
Um, it'll remain dormant unless I come to town.
So you would stay there occasionally when you're in town if it's not being rented?
Yes, if I'm here visiting my grandchildren, yes, I will reside there.
And you mentioned Ms. Thomas, who's, works for you, your company?
Yes, correct.
And she is available?
That's her?
Correct.
24/7 to handle any emergency onsite?
Yes, she currently resides here and works for the company 24/7.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Vine? Thank you, Mr. Vine.
All right.
Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? We'll begin our comments with Mr. Stewart.
Based on Mr. Vine's, um, comments, you know, the home will be used for short, short-term rental only if it's approved, and then when he's here for occasional use while he's visiting in town. Uh, and he did mention Ms. Thomas, um, is in town, um, she's nodding her head in the back, and she's available 24/7, uh, works in, in real estate, managing some of the properties here. And, um, based on that, I'm comfortable, and we had, anyone signed up for this, or not? No, no one signed up to speak for, against this, or any comments, um, sent in on this from adjacent property owners in the neighborhood. I'm in favor of granting a one-year probationary year, um, for a total of 30 nights in that calendar year, with the total of three cars, uh, vehicles parked off, one parked in the garage, the other two on the parked driveway parking area, and a total of six adults.
Ms. Coley?
I'm in agreement.
I agree.
I agree.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. This is the motion, in regard to ZBA 107-22, to approve the petition of Reginald Vines for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 2600 Fourth Street East, zoned R3, Council District 5, subject to the following conditions: a limit of six adults, a limit of three vehicles, with one vehicle must be parked in the garage, 30, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year, accessory structures may never be occupied, and a business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley?
Yes.
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 That petition passes. Okay, now, are we now, we do 112?
Okay, moving on to ZBA 11222, Kathy Thornton, petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 91 Arcadia Drive, zoned R1, Council District 5. Here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. View from the street. applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request. The house is four bedrooms and two bathrooms, no violations or complaints. Petitioner states, two cars can fit in the garage and two in the driveway. The request is for four vehicles and eight adults. If approved, staff does recommend four vehicles and eight adults. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you.
We had four written comments in opposition, as well as a petition signed by eighty-four individuals approximately.
I think everybody has read those. They're in the file. Thank you, Ms. Ay. Now, do we have anyone representing this petition? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy Thornton. My husband and I are the owners of ninety-one Arcadia Drive. I am a licensed real estate agent in the state of Alabama. This home, we, we have several rental properties, long-term rental properties that we own. We also had a long-term rental property in Tuscaloosa that we owned and sold in twenty twenty-one. This home was purchased as a second home for us, for our family to enjoy when we come to Tuscaloosa for various events. It was not purchased as investment property, that was not our intention. But now that we realize we are not using it as much as we thought we were, we want to supplement the time that we are not here, um, with, uh, short-term rentals, because long-term rental just will not fit what our ideas are, because we want our family to be able to use it at will when we are here. Um, we are using, uh, Lauren Stewart, who is a member of the Alice Maxwell Real Estate Team with Keller Williams. She's gonna be our property manager. She is a licensed Realtor as well. She has seven years of property management, and her husband owns his own maintenance company. He is the one that has been doing some maintenance and some home improvements for us since we've honed, owned the home.
Now, where was, did you live?
I live in Weetumpka, Alabama.
All right, are there any questions from Ms. Thornton?
I, I have a question about the driveway. That was, I drove by that house several times, and I wanted to ask city staff, um, that to me, that to me just looks very difficult, even if they have two cars in the, in the garage and two cars at the end of the driveway. Where, how do you see it? I mean, I know your recommendation was four, but looking at it, looking at this picture, we're not the same.
Okay, if two cars are in the driveway, in the garage, then there's, looks to me there's ample room for two cars to pull beyond the garage doors and sit past that, so that the vehicle that leaves the garage can back out to the street without another car moving.
And the driveway going into that is, that's a two-car driveway or one, see, it looked like, not that I'm an engineer, but it, it looks so narrow going in there, would that?
If you notice in this photo here, the driveway looks like, based on wheel paths that I see, that this probably accommodates two, two cars, two cars wide, but the area behind the garage is wider, and two cars can sit there, for sure.
Even without using the garage?
Even without using the garage, yes, sir.
Any other questions to Ms. Thornton? Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this petition? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Leslie Kincaid. I am a professional real estate agent in Tuscaloosa. Been in it for now over three decades. Uh, my parents live next door, Bill and Virginia Owen, in, um, ninety Arcadia. So the drive, their driveway's here and our driveway, they're a butt with a little strip of grass in between it. Um, my parents built that home fifty-eight years ago and still live in, age ninety-one in eighty-eight, as are their night, adjoining neighbors. They've been there for over fifty years. And I just don't, I just don't think that's fair to, for their property values to go down, because we've got an A, uh, RBNB or rental. The first thing, uh, customers ask me now is, are any of the surrounding houses, when, when they wanna buy something, are they rental or short-term rental? Values do go down, and there's nobody in this room that doesn't understand that. And Arcadia is a large neighborhood, and I think y'all have like, um, it used to be we're going by a percentage of how many houses in the neighborhood to who could be an RBNB. And sure, when you have a big neighborhood like that, people may not think that much about it, but they don't want it next to them. And I own the home, my parents live in the home, and we don't want it, period. And that sign that you see, a couple of pictures back, there's a sign of the person that does the yard every now and then has been in the yard since they bought it. We don't, we normally don't do that in our neighborhood.
What about the sign?
It's a sign for, uh, advertising the guy that cuts their yard that's been in the yard since they moved in. And we normally don't do that in our neighborhood.
Uh, Ms. Kincaid?
Right there, right there.
Ms. Kincaid, do you have any statistics on property values dropping when short-term rentals are in neighborhoods? Or do you have any written documentation that can help us?
I could probably get some. All I know is my experience and other agents that I know in our conversations, um, if you've got rental next to you, uh, it's not favorable.
Well, I would really like to see some written documentation on that. If you can find anything, not tonight, obviously, but in the future, uh, if you can, I think you know me, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, do you like rentals on your street?
We have a lot of.
We have a lot of short-term rentals on my street. I think the one you sold across the street from me is short-term rental.
But, um, I just would really, uh, like for the board to see what any documentation would be proving that the property value does devalue when there's short-term rentals.
Well, that, I can, I can see what I can do, but the point is, I don't want it.
I understand.
And the neighbors don't want it, and eighty-eight people don't want it.
But when we're talking about rental and short-term rental, we're talking about two different things, because
I know, I understand, but
we need to be clear about that, but we need to be clear about that, because you're right, a rental next to me is different than a short-term next to me, because she owns the property, and she does live in the property at times. So to say that that's a short, a rental property when it's really not. So there's a difference between short-term and, so I just wanna make sure that that's clear, and we don't put it out there like, a rental is different than a short-term rental, because she owns the property.
Long-term rental, short-term rental, rental is the common word.
And do you understand that the owners of this house could rent it for six months? A year, students, no more than three unrelated, without any approvals from the city whatsoever?
I do.
And they could park on the street? There would be no contact person, there would be no permit to look at, there would be no regulatory control other than the zoning orders. But with short-term rental, we have a contact person, you cannot park on the streets, you can lose your license in, in a hurry. So what I'm saying is, if you wanna talk property values and perception, then the fact that this house could be rented for a longer term will affect property values much greater than a highly regulated short-term rental, and that's a distinction you have to make.
Right, and I anticipate that'll probably happen, but how many cars are you talking about being able to park there? Did you say four?
The request is four.
Three or four?
Their request is four.
The request is, the request, it has not been approved. The request is four.
If I'm a monkey's uncle, if you can get four cars there, okay, without stacking them.
Thank you, Ms. Kincaid. Do we have anyone else? Yes, Mr. Booth?
Thank you, Mark Booth, ninety-three Arcadia. Uh, my parents built that house sixty-one years ago.
This town?
Pardon me? No, the, my, my parents' house in Arcadia, sixty-one years ago, which is two doors down. My mother still resides in the home at ninety-five. There are a lot of elderly people, I hate to say that, but they're, they are in the neighborhood, and there are a lot of children. And the reason why neighbors buy, people buy the homes over there is because everybody takes such great care of their home. And that's all we want. Now, I will disagree, I've been in the real estate business for about, longer than I wanna think. Uh, so over forty years, but when you have a rental that somebody rents in there, you do have problems with renters. I know that. I, I have problems with my renters, and that's just one of the things that goes with it. But what you get with a part-time owner who rents their home, you have a vacant house. Vacant houses bring crime. When this house was vacant, the next-door neighbors had a break-in. They caught it on, caught him on their ring, and eventually were able to get a hold, catch the guy who broke into the house. You know, you have people come through that don't live in the neighborhood. Leslie's mom and dad walk down the street almost every day to walk the neighborhood. You know, when you have people who don't know that you have children and senior adults in the neighborhood, there's a risk. Uh, I came home from the first ballgame, believe it was the first ballgame, uh, there was three cars parked on the street. I don't know if they'd rented it then, I have no idea. Uh, I didn't know they were gonna use it for a rental property until I saw the sign of the yard, 'cause I was un, understanding, they had told everybody they wanted to have it for their children, come to ballgames or whatever, and that's fine, I'm, I'm all for that. But when you mislead your neighbors, which I think they did, nor did they ever knock on the door, to my knowledge, of any of the neighbors. I think they might have talked to one or two that actually came over to introduce themselves, but they didn't go around asking people and say, hey, you know, we'd like to do this. You know, it's a whole lot easier, you know, to just go with it and see what happens. But if you really wanna be a good neighbor, and that's what we want, is people who will be neighbors, not people who will own a piece of property, come in and stay a few days. So if they're gonna rent it thirty nights a year, and I don't know how many nights they plan on staying, so let's say they rent it thirty nights, uh, stay there thirty nights a year, there's three hundred and five nights a year that it's vacant. And a vacant house is a problem. And that's the problem I have with short-term rentals, who, with people who don't own the property. If y'all own your house, and you wanna take off and go for a weekend and rent your house out, I'm all for that, 'cause you gotta come back and see your neighbor the next day. These people are in Weetump, California, it's a great town, sure, they're wonderful people, but there's nobody that, they don't have to come back and hear the complaints of their neighbor, or hear the, you know, compliments of their neighbor, either way. So they're not, they're not part of our community, 'cause they own the house. Just because you own a house don't mean a thing. Anybody can own a house. If you're gonna be part of the community, you need to be part of the community, and you need to be respective of the people who live next door and down the street from you and behind you. And a vacant house three hundred days a year is a problem. So who's, does that mean we're gonna get extra police protection over there? We can't even get the police to drive through there once or twice a day.
Ms. Booth, we appreciate your comments, but I think you may be out of
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Booth. We have Okay, uh,
My name's Brian Porter. I'm actually coming up here next. I'm probably the most hated person in this room, 'cause I'm home the house in the Highlands. But, uh, I am a real estate appraiser and been an appraiser for twenty-eight years. Probably done over twenty thousand appraisals in that amount of time, and there's no evidence saying that a short-term rental has any negative effect on property values. In fact, they usually, uh, bring the property values up, 'cause they make them more attractive to investors. You can look at Lake Tuscaloosa, where we have a high concentration of short-term rentals, property values have shot through the roof. Look in the historic district where they allow them, property values have shot through the roof. They also wanna say stuff about the effects of vacant property. It's the difference between vacant property and abandoned property. Th, these houses are not gonna be abandoned, they're just vacant, but they're well-maintained and so forth. There's no indication that, that they're just gonna leave it and let it run down.
Mr. Porter, Mr. Porter, sorry, I would really like to see documented information.
There is no information to support that there would be any damages to the surrounding property, so there, there's no information that would say there is any damages. So that means you're asking to make sure you do nothing.
What about property value? Do you have any?
Absolutely, I can show you every cell in MLS.
See this. I mean, not right now, but eventually have this information.
Well, I can show you what the sales data is in any given area of this town. I, I'm telling you, I analyze data every day. There is no, there is no evidence of that, period.
I would very much appreciate seeing it.
For you to be able to see the MLS to show you that there is no evidence of negativity in short-term rental areas that are sure, to show you sales, okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have anyone else? Mr. Booth, we've
You can come up to the
Well, let Mr. Straley come up first.
I'm Adrian Straley. I live at ninety-five Arcadia. I've lived a few doors down from this house for thirty-nine years. Um, so I know Arcadia pretty well. Arcadia, or any good residential community, needs to be occupied by stable families. We don't want Arcadia to become a kind of Potemkin village of pretty houses that are vacant except on football weekends. Uh, that's not a, the definition of a living, vibrant, wholesome community, uh, which Arcadia has, has been for generations. And we can see this, uh, kind of creeping in. I don't mean that it's gonna suddenly overnight become a slum, but, uh, we want a vibrant community occupied by families that actually live there, take an interest in it, uh, and are going to be responsible for it in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Straley. For those of y'all don't know, that Mr. Straley is a longtime planning director of the city of Tuscaloosa. Do we have anyone else that we should speak for against this? Uh, Mr. Booth, I believe you had a question.
Since I can't address the, the owners and petitioners, I would like to ask y'all if they would ask them if they have rented this property prior to at, coming here to apply for the, uh, license to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Do we have the petitioner come back up for a second, please, Ms. Thornton? Would you like to, uh, respond to any of these comments?
Well, I think I'd like to respond to a lot of them, 'cause I feel really attacked, so, um, and I apologize that we did not go
Ms. Thornton.
Ms. Thornton. I'm sorry, I apologize that we did not go door-to-door to meet all of our neighbors, and, but I am a Realtor, and in this free trade society, any seller is, is allowed to sell their property to whomever they, they choose to. So the seller before was, you know, they're, this is free trade, and I know that's a, is, it's a great community. We actually bought the house sight unseen from our friend's mother, whose husband, um, passed away, and they were kind of in dire straits. So we bought the house and never saw the community, never saw the house before we paid for it. Um, love it, it's beautiful, our neighbors are wonderful, he, he watch us, he watches over the house, he lets us know when things are wrong, he takes our trash to the street and back. So we do not want to do anything that harms the integrity of that community. But my question is, when these people are ready to move, what are they gonna do with their property? Are all the neighbors gonna be able to tell them what they can and cannot do, and who they can and cannot sell their homes to? And that was our idea for the short-term rental, is that house doesn't, they're vacant. We had a severe natural gas leak in that house, severe. We did not know it, home inspection did not know it, the maintenance man that was doing our painting inside found it. He and his wife were the ones that were gonna manage it. People need to be there, they need to be going in and out. Homes do not need to be vacant, I understand that. That was the idea of the short-term rental, and because we come there, because my personal belongings are there, because my furniture is there, um, we want to be very restrictive of who does rent the property, which you do have more control over short-term rentals than you have long-term rentals. I mean, there are stricter laws, I mean, there are laws and ordinances on both, but there are much stricter laws on who you can and cannot rent to when you put your house out there on the rental market, especially being a Realtor. So, uh, there's things that I have to add here to, that are a higher standard than just average Joe Low that wants to rent his house, you know, so we don't want to compromise integrity of the neighborhood. Um, your question was, had we rented it before? We let our neighbors that lived to the right of us. They had family coming in for Christmas last year. They called to see if they had, their family could use that house, so they would be side by side, and they did not have to stay in a very expensive hotel. We let them stay in our house for three or four nights for a hundred and fifty dollars. That didn't even pay the power bill, but that's what we charged them and asked them to clean it before they came and before they cleaned. So as a rental, no. We did allow some people to, to stay there. We allowed some people to stay, it's my daughter's friends. They stayed there, um, from Texas for a graduation, for graduation in May. We just let them stay, they were her sorority sisters, so, but no. But no, we have not put that house on open market as any type of rental.
And don't do that again.
I know, well, I didn't understand, well, I didn't understand the process until Lauren, who's a Realtor here, sent me the paperwork, so I do apologize. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Thornton?
Ms. Thornton, who was the neighbor that you said, which side was the neighbor?
That, that's what?
The neighbor that asked you, could their family...
To the right. I believe their last name is Smith.
So they are okay with you using your house as you use your house?
They have not spoken to them, so...
But when they needed it, that it was okay?
When they needed it, they were very willing. I mean, they called us, you know, and we were like, sure, you know, why not? We're not there, we're not there at Christmas.
Okay.
You know, help their family out.
Any other questions for Ms. Thornton? Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Thank you.
Well, now, is there anything else from staff? Nothing else from staff? What about our board comments with Mr. Stewart?
A lot of you in here may have never attended one of these hearings related to short-term rentals, or watched this on TV, or streamed this or any other way, so you're probably learning a lot of things. Short-term rentals, and I don't know, if you don't mind, raise your hand if you've ever stayed in a short-term rental, an Airbnb, VRBO, you know, spattering of folks here. Short-term rentals didn't exist in the capacity they're in now, ten years ago, fifteen years ago. In larger markets, big cities, yes, they're more prevalent. They have become more prevalent in a lot of communities. If it wasn't for the success of UA football, we probably wouldn't be having this hearing tonight, because short-term rentals, that's what drives the market here, for the most part. Lake Tuscaloosa does get some as well for lake use, non-football. Football drives everything that's driven. I think most of us can be happy with our property values in this community, so it's an unintended consequence of success of our community financially and many other ways. So in saying that, the city, was it three and a half, four years ago, your city council decided to address short-term rentals. When they did, they decided they could do nothing, perhaps have some liability associated with it, or they could get engaged and craft a formal policy. A lot of time out of city staff, before it went to a vote with council, three and a half plus, four years ago, they studied it, they enacted an ordinance. It's been amended three times since then, tweaked and expanded to the city. In staff, I'm not gonna hold you to a number, but just for everyone's benefit, how many in the hundreds have been approved since the policy came into effect?
I would say in the neighborhood of two hundred.
Two hundred, okay. Out of those two hundred, some only went their first year, didn't go for renewal, but out of those, how many have we had issues with, that reported to the city?
Not very many. Probably a dozen, if that.
And now that it's open to the city, has been for two-plus years, citywide, every city council, district, and neighborhoods around the city have short-term rentals, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So again, a lot of you may not be familiar with it. We've had the privilege, if you want to call it that, on this body of hearing every single one of these for three and a half years. Can't speak for everyone, but I know most of us are homeowners within the city, all citizens here, volunteer on this board. The fear of the unknown is real. Before I sat in this spot and hearing these ordinances, I live in a subdivision, neighborhood similar to y'all's, in Tuscaloosa, as we all do, and in saying that, the fear of the unknown is a big thing. Oh, God, my property values are gonna plummet. We might have some freak we don't know stay in the neighborhood. Everything that y'all will talk about when it's your time to talk, everyone's thought about. I haven't short-term rented before, but I've approved enough of them and looked around and know people who do, who are friends in different neighborhoods. Some, I got a letter like some of y'all did, because they're in proximity to my home, and in hearing that, my attitude of sitting here has changed, because to what city staff just commented on, and what anecdotally I've spoken to people who rent their homes, it's not a sky is falling situation, it's just not. I haven't heard personally of a bad experience of someone breaking a towel rod in a bathroom. So all that being said, we're homeowners, we're citizens, we're taxpayers here, we're very much interested in our property values and every other public safety issue here. In saying that, this has not proven to this point to be a crisis. And I know I'm on a ramble, but I think we've had the benefit of hearing a lot more than you all do, and you definitely get your opportunity to speak. But based on the petition that's in front of us, Mrs. Thornton, Kathy Thornton, Mrs. Thornton has purchased this home, like any of us can do, buying and selling a home. She is coming before this body, and she has a real estate background, she's engaged with a local Realtor, who I think many of you know, the name she mentioned, who lived in your neighborhood, to help manage this property in her absence. And in saying that, I'm in favor of granting a probationary year with a total of thirty nights in that calendar year, total of four vehicles, and a total of eight adults.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ms. Coley?
I never want to seem like I'm not sympathetic to what you're saying when you come up, or that we are combative in any way. I live in a neighborhood that has a short-term rental, that is vacant most of the time, as a matter of fact, two doors down from my house, and I thought the same thing. I was like, oh my goodness, you know, a vacant property. And I don't agree with a lot of vacant homes, because that does not support a neighborhood or community, that's not children going to school, that's not revenue for the city, in the sense that we normally think of it. But most of these short-term rentals are sprinkled, just a few sprinkled throughout the neighborhood. It's not overtaking unless you're in the downtown area by the, in Ms. Ford's neighborhood, but most areas, it's just a sprinkling. People try it, and if you notice, people said they did a couple of nights, a few nights here, or something like that. It's not as, like you said, that it's not like you think it's gonna be, it's the fear of the unknown. So we do understand what you're saying, we do know you want to protect your neighborhood, we want to protect your neighborhood, we want to protect our city. But the homeowner does have the right, and your right is to utilize 3-1-1. Your right is to make sure that they adhere to the short-term rules and to report any problems that you see, no matter how minor they are. Call the city, email, call 3-1-1, and let it be known, then that way, when they come up for renewal, because that's when we usually deny it, when it comes up for renewal, if there is something on record. So that's the part that you have to pay, and that's what I admonish you to do. Try it, let her try it and see, and you probably won't even know when they have a guest, you won't even know it. Most of the time, I never know when somebody's renting the short-term rental near me. So I am in favor of granting it.
Thank you, Ms. Coley. I agree with everything, both of you, thank you.
A couple of months ago, we had a petitioner that had information on what five years down the road to short-term rental does to neighborhoods, and I begged this man for this written information so that we can study this and we know what the future might look like for a lot of communities. Never did get any information. I was not trying to be facetious, if anybody does have any written information, any documentation of what happens or how it affects neighborhoods, I think it would be very beneficial to provide the board or the city of Tuscaloosa with that information. I see no reason to deny this. I was concerned about the parking in the driveway, but after a city engineer explained to me, you know, pulling up, I did view that, I drove by the house several times, but I had a hard time envisioning four cars. But I will go with what city staff recommendations are.
I agree with my board members, I'm in favor of the petition.
Thank you. That being the case, the motion is as follows. In regard to ZBA 11222, to approve the petition of Kathy Thornton for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 91 Arcadia Drive, Zoned R1, Council District Five, subject to the following conditions: a limit of eight adults and four vehicles, a limit of thirty nights per year, a limit of one a year, accessory structures may never be occupied at any time, and a business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental operations. Voting with Ms. Coley.
Yes.
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 That petition is approved. Next case.
Okay, moving on to our last short-term rental of the night, ZBA 11322, Brian Porter, petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 244 The Highlands, Zoned R1, Council District Five. Here's an aerial view of that property, as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. It's a view from the street, and just another view. And one more. Clickable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request, the house is three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, no violations or complaints. The request is for two vehicles and two to four adults. If approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
I believe we had seven written comments in opposition, as well as a hundred and four signatures on a petition, all in opposition of this application.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Do we have the petitioner here?
My name is Brian Porter, I live at 4610 Bluegrass Parkway, Tuscaloosa.
And Mr. Porter, have you engaged in short-term rental operations before?
Sir?
Have you had short-term rental?
No, sir, don't own any short-term rentals, I do own several long-term rentals, but I do have a management company that manages those properties primarily. I have managed them over the years, but I've found that it's easier to allow someone else to manage when you get several.
And is that company here in town?
It is, yes, sir.
In the event the police or fire department need to contact you...
They can contact me, yes, sir.
There will be somebody we can get in touch with.
Yes, sir.
And have you developed rules and regulations for the conduct of your tenant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I noticed when I was over there, that dumpster that...
That's right, I'm renovating the house.
Yeah.
I'm bringing the property values up in the neighborhood of the older homes that have not been renovated, so...
But you'll be moving that before?
Oh, of course, yes, sir, as soon as the house gets to being renovated. Putting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of work to it. Yes, I do have a permit, everything.
Any other questions for Mr. Porter?
When do you expect to be finished with the renovations?
Probably within the next month or so, as you know, labor's hard to come up with, reliable labor anyway, so we're certainly working as fast as we can to get it done. So I would say maybe six weeks, hopefully.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Okay. I know there's a lot of concern here with doing this in this neighborhood, and I just want to let everybody know that I'm not trying to bring the property values down. I'm not, I'm... Well, like I said, I'm sure you'll get to hear from everybody, but it's not gonna have a negative effect. Like I said, I may eventually resell this house, so I certainly want to keep the integrity of this neighborhood as good as possible. I actually bought the house thinking that I may eventually move into it. I've owned a lot over in Lexington Downs, as well as have a house there in order to build, but with the prices of everything being expensive as they have been, we haven't started to build. So I decided to buy a smaller house that we possibly may move into, me and my family, and then sell our larger house so we can build once everything goes that direction. But with the interest rates being what they are, we just haven't decided to build yet, so I bought this house that I may short-term rental a little bit to try to offset some of the expense until that happens.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we, I have only one name on our list so far, and that is Mr. Guin.
I may need a short-term rental agreement to stay here this late with you guys tonight. Good evening, my name is Stuart Guin, I live at 63 The Highlands. When my wife Molly and I moved into the Highlands in February, with the new kids on the block, we chose the neighborhood for all the same reasons many of our neighbors chose it in the past, quiet street, close-knit community, and an incredibly safe place to raise our soon-to-be-born son, Briggs. For those of us in the medical community, The Highlands is also convenient to DCH Regional Medical Center, where many Highlands residents have trained, see patients, and care for our local community. With the news of Mr. Porter's petition for short-term rentals, all of this has potential to go by the wayside. As the youngest property owner in The Highlands, we represent a new generation of homeowners looking to raise a family in a neighborhood that so many have come to love in our neighborhood's ninety-eight-year history. For years, Mr. Porter's property at 244 The Highlands was inhabited by long-term tenants, a very pleasant couple, who shared the same pride for The Highlands that current homeowners share. What Mr. Porter has proposed upends that. His property is slated to become a revolving door of renters who will have no regard for what so many of us have come to love about our neighborhood. What's more, these transients will be inhabiting a property only fifty yards from where we took our now-five-month-old son in at night. Our strolls around the loop, quiet mornings with coffee on the porch, and weekend evenings on our front lawn will be replaced with an ebb and flow of transients with no regard or respect for neighbors. Tuscaloosa is a great city.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
How do you know all that?
Sir?
How do you know what you're telling me?
Is there any background check done on renters?
I'm asking you, how do you know that these people will have no respect?
Can we pause the timer?
Don't worry about the timer. How do you know these people will have no respect?
Mr. Ennis, respectfully, do you feel safe saying that those who rent a home...
I'm asking you the question.
And I'm asking you a question in return?
No, I'm asking you the question.
Yes, sir. Do you believe that renters care for a property the same way that the homeowner cares for the property?
So you don't have an answer to my question?
I just provided an answer for your question.
You don't want to answer, okay. Go ahead.
Tuscaloosa's a great city, do we agree on that point?
I'm not answering questions here, you're providing answers.
One that Molly and I have called home since 2011. As we all know, much of the market, again, this is an assumption, but I could probably find data, much of the market for short-term rentals in the city is driven by University of Alabama events, like football and graduation, all celebratory events that non-residents come here to commemorate. Given our neighborhood's proximity to campus, we believe the majority of tenants will fall into this category. It is no secret what takes place with many of these celebrations. Allowing transient short-term rentals in The Highlands decreases the safety and gives us second thoughts about raising our family in The Highlands. The signed petition you have all received speaks loud and clear, with over ninety percent of current Highlands residents signing in support to deny this application. Today, we ask the zoning board of adjustment to please be true and accountable to those of us who call The Highlands home, please exercise discretionary item B in the ZBA staff report attached to Mr. Porter's application, and prevent the detriment of our neighborhood and its safety by denying this application for short-term rental in The Highlands.
Thank you, Mr. Guin.
It's Mr. Guin.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis.
Thank you. No, sir, not yet. I'll call on you to come back after everybody's had a chance to speak. Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Heather White, I live at 156 The Highlands. Forgive my allergies, Tuscaloosa's doing a number on me these days. By your remarks, I don't expect you'll listen with any particular sympathy to what I have to say, so I'll just ask your patience. I've sat here for several hours in order to say it, so thank you for listening, and thank you for your time. I don't want to speak too much for my neighbors, I'll just put this personally, I think I speak for some of my neighbors and the rest can contradict me if they don't feel the way that I do. But we feel that the variance being requested represents a distortion of the purpose of the law or the ordinance governing short-term rentals. As a number of people have said, we had wonderful rental families in the neighborhood. Earlier, you granted a variance for two very good friend of mine in another neighborhood, and I'm glad that you did, because I know them to be responsible homeowners and wonderful people, and I want nothing but that they should profit off of game day, along with everybody else. This variance is for, as we understand it, a purely commercial venture. There will be no owner acumen in the house at any time, not for thirty days a year, not for any days a year, it is strictly an investment property. That seems to us, as I say, a distortion of the purpose of the ordinance granting people the right, which I certainly support, to make some rental income off their houses every now and again, that seems reasonable to me. But a purely commercial property, that is to say, a pure business venture in a purely residential neighborhood, is something else again. It's something that we don't want for... It's something that we don't want for our neighborhood, and we think is not an appropriate use of the ordinance governing this kind of rental. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sure.
First comment you made about listening was sympathy. We are entirely very sympathetic to everyone's opinion.
I misspoke, I guess. It sounded like you were anticipating things I had to say.
But when you talked about earlier, you also referenced you had a friend who was here earlier that approved, and you were glad that they got approved. And are they a homeowner that lives in the house?
Yes.
Okay. And, but it's okay for them to make money in that endeavor in a residential neighborhood, but because the petitioner in front of us, and he'll have an opportunity to come back, he doesn't live there, but you wouldn't want him to make money?
Oh, I want him to make all the money he wants, but I want anyone who's going to make that kind of money in a residential neighborhood to be a resident of the neighborhood with the same daily investment, the same skin in the game that the rest of us have in the way people conduct themselves in the neighborhood.
And just so we're clear to everyone, you said it was a variance. It's actually a special exception, and that's a different legal standard, just for clarity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Wong?
I'm sorry, I keep walking away.
No, thank you, Ms. Wong.
Okay.
Do we have anyone else? Yes.
Dr. Curtis Tucker. I'm at 148 The Highlands. I know it's going to be a little bit of similar thing, but I am coming again from a little bit different perspective. I mean, our neighborhood is 100 years old. Obviously, when this neighborhood was established, no one had heard of neighborhood covenants. I mean, when I brought this up to my friends, they're like, we have a covenant that prevents people from doing this. Well, we have no way to do that. Our protection in this situation, I feel like, is this table that's here before us. I mean, what is being requested is an exception to allow this to happen. So, and I do want to say, I mean, the neighborhood through all of these years is all part of a neighborhood. I have one of the long-term renters next to me, have been great neighbors. I know y'all talked about how that changes things, but it doesn't. It's still my neighbor that I can go over and speak to. One of the neighbors that was there before now owns the house across the street. I mean, they spent the tornado in my basement when we walked out and saw that our neighborhood had been destroyed. You know, those are all things that you do for neighbors, and that is what makes The Highlands what it is, is that it is a neighborhood. It is not just a long row of houses that are waiting for game day to come. We are a neighborhood that has been there. We don't even have any way to enforce our neighborhood dues. I mean, those happen because the people in the neighborhood want to do the right thing for the neighborhood, and that's because they see you each day. We don't have anything preventing people from having cars in front of their house or campers parked, or, you know, letting their house fall apart. It happens because they're responsible to their neighbors. And I think they're exactly right. When we get someone who's not living in the neighborhood, that is not a neighbor looking out for your neighborhood. I mean, that is someone who is looking out to make sure that they make money so that they can make money on their investment. I certainly don't want my house value to fall, but that's not really what I'm worried about in this situation. I don't want investors in the people next door. I want neighbors in the people next door. And we don't have a way to protect this if this goes through. And you can say, don't be afraid of the unknown, but that is certainly the first step in me not having neighbors next door to me. And that does, again, we have had wonderful luck with long-term rental, other things that want to be done. And even if it was a situation when one of the owners of the house wanted to go for a weekend, I could understand it. But this is someone who's just coming in the neighborhood to make money off of our neighborhood.
Mr. Tucker, I would say this. Your neighborhood could become a historic district and take advantage of the protections provided by the city for historic preservation in districts which are extensive. In addition, I do believe that there is a method available to adopt new covenants and restrictions for your neighborhood.
My understanding with new covenants is that we have to have everyone in the neighborhood agree. So I've got five partners. I can barely get them to agree on anything. I'm not sure how we get 80 homes to agree on even the most basic rules. But it would be nice, yes. That would be an ultimate solution.
And you could become a historic district as well.
Yeah.
But, be that as it may, so those are many avenues that are available.
If I could ask one other thing when Mr. Porter speaks, I'm a little bit confused about who owns the home, because I was understanding it was an LLC. And then, but he's talking about, I'm not clear on who owns this and who's renting it and who the money's going to, so...
According to our information, we've looked at that very carefully. It is an LLC. Mr. Porter is a registered agent of the LLC, and its address is in fact his address. So that type of process is not uncommon in short-term rental or any other type of zoning. So we're satisfied that Mr. Porter is the appropriate entity in this instance.
Dr. Tucker, could I ask a question? When you all first heard that someone was going to rent their home, long-term rental, what was the response of the community?
We haven't, they've been there ever. We bought our house with a renter next door. And again, we've been through three long-term renters, and for me, I've never thought much about that. So, and again, anytime we've had a problem, we've just gone, oh, I mean, we've known them every time. And again, have seen their kids grow up, and they beat our dog, and haven't thought much about it. And the house that they are replacing was a very long-term rental. I think about 25 years that the same family rented the home. So, again, I know for a lot of times that maybe looked at as a bad thing, but in our neighborhood, it has been something that has always been a benefit. And again, actually, you know, our renters turned into our, you know, our owners across the street, so...
Well, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Do we have anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mary Meriwether, and I live at 48 The Highlands. And I had not planned on speaking tonight at all, but in response to some of the things that have been brought up, I feel like I need to say something and also ask some questions. And I'm pitter-patter right now, because I hadn't planned on speaking. Bob, you said something about that we have the option to the Dr. Tucker about becoming a historic district. And one of my best friends lives downtown in the historic district, and she says it's just a mess. Not the historic designation, but for game-day rentals, and that it just, just being in the historic district does not prevent that.
It doesn't.
And so I did want to bring that up. I mean, I know there are benefits to it.
But other than that, it does provide significant protections, particularly in...
Somewhat.
But no, short-term rental applies in historic districts.
The other thing is, our homeowners have been there, many of them, for decades. And in two days, Bill and I will have been in our house for 43 years. So it's like a birthday. But these homeowners in The Highlands have been paying the city taxes for years and years and years. And when you have over 100 signatures from the neighborhood in opposition to this, I think as citizens who've been here this long and contributed to this city, that some attention should be paid to that. I really do. My husband, who is out of town now, or he would be here, said that he doesn't know this for a fact, but he suspects that in District 5, our neighborhood probably pays higher property taxes than any of the other neighborhoods. I'm not certain of that, but I know that we do contribute to the city. We have many members who do. But I think it's important to listen to the residents of the neighborhood. Y'all may not agree, but I hope this committee will. Because if you have over 100 signatures in opposition, that should tell this committee something. So, thank you. I love our neighborhood, and I love Tuscaloosa. And I don't want our neighborhood to start going the way... Because we are close to the university and the Coliseum and Bryant-Denny. I don't want it to start going in the direction of what has happened to some of the older, beautiful, former, beautiful downtown neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meriwether. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Porter? No, 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 not yet. I'll get to you. Yes.
I'm Bruce Henderson, and I'm soon to reside at 140 The Highlands, and looking very forward to it. Mary Meriwether emboldened me. I wasn't going to say anything either, but I would like the opportunity just to make a couple of points, being a new neighbor and what a wonderful neighborhood The Highlands is. First of all, again, you know, numbers-wise, 104 signatures is pretty strong to talk about, but I want to put it in perspective. I think that's 69 of the 75 occupied homes in the neighborhood. So that's pretty much unanimous. In line with Mr. Stewart, your point, I commend for your reading the Chattanooga News. They have put their moratorium on their short-term leasing because of the problems that today we're talking about are speculative. They're experiencing it. And I've been in Chattanooga and seen that area, and I've seen it happen. So again, I commend that for your reading prospectively.
And you'll have plenty of time. To your point, New Orleans, a lot of us love New Orleans. I've stayed in Airbnbs in the Garden District there. They've actually rolled back in some of their historic areas, very similarly to that point. And I think you read horror stories, they happen, and issues happen, and cities react. And that's why I wanted to make a point earlier with staff, where what our experience to date, we luckily, because I think we've enforced it, and some of the other cities, if you go in and read ordinance around the country, you'll see they're open-ended. 365, Katy Bar the Door, they can do whatever they want. So just knowing that, that's why we've got some of the checks that we've got in ours.
I understand that. That doesn't give us a lot of comfort, but I do understand that. I just think it's very important to see that this is occurring. And there are some cities that have said, we're putting moratoriums on it now. I'd just like to say, I grew up in Memphis, and I moved here in 1995, which is, I'm terrible at math, was that 27, 28 years ago? And there was a neat movie there that was filmed there called The Firm. Tom Cruise, you know, one of the John Grisham novels. That house that he lived in was in Chickasaw Gardens. And I always thought Chickasaw Gardens was the most beautiful neighborhood I'd ever seen, until I moved to Tuscaloosa in 1995, and we were driving around looking for a house. And we just stumbled on this neighborhood that had this archway that is now 98 years old, said The Highlands. And I just told my wife, I thought that is the most beautiful neighborhood I've ever seen. And I've come to find out in the 27 years that I've lived here, what a unique neighborhood it is. It's what I call, it's a front porch neighborhood. It's not a back porch neighborhood. We live, and you just sit back there and you grill. It is truly a front porch neighborhood. And every time we drive through, there are moms with kids in strollers and people walking in the street. I mean, we've had traffic jams of people sometime that it's so, that it's such a front porch neighborhood. So we're excited about building. Had I known that someone was thinking about buying a house and making short-term rentals in there, I would have been a little bit concerned. Mr. Chairman, you may know this. There's a parable of the camel who stuck his nose under the tent. It's a neat little parable, and I use this sometimes in my management training, is that you have to get ahead of issues. It has to say with, on a cold night, that camel's going to stick his nose under tent because he wants to get in. And then pretty soon, he gets in, if nobody does anything, pretty soon the camel's in the tent, and the owner has to get out of the tent. It's a moral about people doing nothing, and I'm very proud of my neighbors for coming and expressing their viewpoint. I mean, the fact that I haven't done the math, it's what, 90% of the occupied dwellings are opposed to this? And I certainly hope this board takes that into consideration. I've got concerns. I mean, I think we've all seen Mr. Porter's behavior a little earlier. And I think he's shown us what kind of neighbor he's going to be. I'm sure he's going to renovate that house, and it's going to look just dandy. But again, I think that we have a unique neighborhood. It is not a long street. It is a neighborhood with one entrance, two entrances, and that is it. It is a front porch neighborhood. And I'm afraid that opening the door of the camel's nose to short-term rentals is going to change that to the detriment of the character and uniqueness of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
And if y'all have any questions, I'm glad to ask. Again, I just wanted to voice my opinion. Again, thank you for bringing up about New Orleans. But certainly Chattanooga, I thought being closer was a good example of some issues that other cities have said, got to put a freeze on them. But thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Anyone else?
Lady in the very back.
Someone in the very back, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Dana McDonald. I live at 244, 240 The Highlands, which is exactly next door to the 244. I'm going to come at it from a total different direction as well, based on my training. My concern is the background checks that would be required or not required. There, we know that you can rent a hotel room, and there may be a sex offender that comes in and takes advantage. My concern would be game-day rentals draw all kind of people from all kind of, all over the country. And that would be my concern, is the university becomes a playground, any environment full of people, whether it's a fair or ball games, concerts, things like that with big crowds opens ourselves up for sex offenders or potential sex offenders to act. And so I'm a mother that has children. There's small children across the street, all around the neighborhood. I know this is a totally different slant, but that is a true concern that I have, that we would be opening up the neighborhood for, to become a crime scene with no background check requirements. Any questions? Thank you.
Let's see, yes, this gentleman in front?
I'm John McDonald. I live at 240 The Highlands. I share my wife's concerns. I do want to bring up a couple of other points. Number one, I will be blowing the 311 system up with the complaints when I see them, so y'all won't have to worry about that. Because I'm right in my front, my back porch and my front porch overlook this house, so I will be watching like a hawk. Number two, this house is in a curve. So I've noticed when I come in and go to my house, which is right beside this, it's in a bad spot. And I have, on many occasions, had to slow down a lot because there are little kids on both sides that I'm concerned that people that are not familiar with this neighborhood, especially if they've been drinking or smoking, and they're doing a lot of things. I'm a physician, and I'm seeing a lot of this right now. There's a lot of anxiety, marijuana use and things like that. I don't want it near my home. I don't want it near my teenage daughters. The house on the other side of this property is vacant and has been vacant for a while. And so if this property is going to sit vacant and just be short-term rental, then we're going to have two back-to-back houses that are sitting vacant. And the one on the other side is being neglected, and the yard is not being kept up. And I'm concerned about that from a property value standpoint. I also have questions about the house being up to code. He's put a big dumpster out front, but I know that there's a lot of rules relating to the code of the house. This is a very old house. My house was built in '56, and I don't think this house is much older. So I would encourage the city to go and look and make sure that it is up to code if it is going to be a short-term rental.
I'm sure there's a building permit, given the extensive renovations. And if there's a building permit, plumbing, electrical, mechanical are all being inspected. And this house is not capable of being occupied for any purpose until a certificate of occupancy is issued by the chief building official.
Well, that would be great to see that. But I appreciate y'all's time, and I am vehemently opposed to this, and I will be watching.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, who was next? Yes, ma'am.
Jenny Kundoff, 22 The Highlands. I am here because I don't want this to happen in my neighborhood, but I don't think one of us.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name?
Sorry. Jenny Kundoff, is that better? Jenny Kundoff, 22 The Highlands. Can you guys hear that? I am here because I'm opposed to this in my neighborhood, but I kind of wanted to bring up another point. I never thought about being against this because it's going to lower property values. I don't do Airbnbs anymore because they're contributing to the housing bubble. They're contributing to costs going up because people don't own their homes. And so same as downtown, if you split a mortgage four ways, you can pay a lot more for a house, right? Than if you actually need to live there. The university is big, and a lot of people work there and want to live close and be able to send their kids to school close and go to work close. So I think more short-term rentals are not good in general, and I certainly don't want to see it happen to our neighborhood where we do have socioeconomic diversity in our neighborhood. And I think we all value that. So, and there is data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics showing that it is contributing to the housing bubble and the problem with people finding housing in terms of short-term rentals being bad generally for cities.
Is there any question? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Now, who had their hand up next? Okay. If that's all in opposition, then I'll call on Mr. Porter to return to the podium.
I just wanted to make another point. I think a lot of the people said they had no problem with long-term tenants in the neighborhood. When I bought the house, it had a tenant in it, they said maybe 25 years. I think it was 15 is what I was told. There was five roof leaks, the floor in the kitchen was rotted out. There was nothing that's been done to the house in several years. So what I'm doing to the house on a short-term rental, you know how well-maintained, you have to have one of those to be able to even rent one of those on a short-term level. So it's going to be exactly the opposite of what it's going to do if it was a long-term rental and gets neglected. Because like I said, it was in horrible shape when I bought it, and it's going to be in a completely new shape after I'm finished with it. So in order to be able to even rent it, you're going to have to keep it in that much, you know, maintained that well. It's also brought up that we were going to attract the bad element. It was going to be partiers and people like this. It's basically a block from the hospital. I assume that I can get a doctor coming in that might want to rent it, or somebody from the university like professors. They, you know, we're not trying to attract anybody in there that's wanting to party and do drugs and marijuana like everybody thinks. You know, it's supposed to be a high-end rental in a great neighborhood.
Any questions to Mr. Porter? Thank you, Mr. Porter. That being all the questions or comments I'm hearing, we'll now turn for board comments to Vice Chairman Stewart.
Several of you have mentioned very heartfelt comments, concerns. It is a great neighborhood. I think it's one of the best neighborhoods in Tuscaloosa. I believe, Mr. Henderson, you really talked about the feel and coming there from Memphis. And I've got a lot of family living in Memphis, and it's an old city like, as Tuscaloosa is. The integrity of your neighborhood, I get that. We, again, we all have homes. Every concern every one of you have, we all have as taxpayers, as parents. We've gone through the public school systems here. Our kids go to UA. We live here. We're invested. So I don't think any of us would do anything to hurt our neighborhoods, your neighborhoods, or any neighborhood in the city intentionally. Now, again, we've talked about the ordinance. It is what it is. I get 90-plus percent of you don't like it. But just the fact of not liking something is not a reason, when we don't have a bona fide reason in the ordinance that the petitioner has done, that we can say no to it. And I don't see any evidence of that. Now, Mr. Porter, you've heard from your neighbors. You don't, I may not live there, but you're a neighboring property owner. And you do have the ability to rent it, live there, let it sit vacant for 20 years, whatever you choose to do with it, because that's what it is when you own something. You've got control of it. But be very mindful of that. You've listened to very real comments and concerns from your neighbors. I would strongly suggest, if you're approved and you follow through with this, and you don't sell it, move to it, or long-term rent it, and you approve for short-term rental, be very mindful. It's your investment, number one, so I'm assuming you would care about it and really try to police it to the degree you can, or your management company. But really listen to what you've heard here tonight. And they're very valid concerns. But again, we've had the benefit, if you want to call it, of hearing this for now four years, of sitting up here once a month. And I wasn't being flipped earlier. The sky hasn't fallen. And the city's amended the ordinance three times. A lot of people choose not to rent in it after they've been approved. You know, it's a living, you know, it's a living being, the ordinance is. It can change. But until something's proven otherwise, I don't see a lot of the concerns, and I hate to say it, but the whole sex offender deal. We, you live on a public street. I live on a public street. Anyone can drive through your neighborhood. Someone could be a guest at some other well-meaning home there, renter or owned. We don't know who comes into the neighborhood. Hopefully with the ordinance, there are protections here, like parking. People say, "Oh, it's just parking." I've been to Super Bowl parties at a former owner of your neighborhood who had annually. There were 50 cars out there, everybody having a great time. Y'all have Christmas parties, family gatherings, Easter gatherings. People park on the streets, more people come into the neighborhood. That's a normal thing. And it can stress parking, people drinking after games. That happens in a lot of neighborhoods, as it is. So all that being said, we hear you. We're sympathetic, but I can see nothing that I've heard tonight, based on the criteria we're looking at, to deny Mr. Porter the opportunity to do this. I did hear one gentleman, I don't see him here, who said he would watch like a hawk. Good. If he's doing something legitimately wrong while it's under short-term rental, then please call it in, as would be any ordinance or law that apply to all citizens and visitors that are already here to protect us. Are we going to allow another comment? Mr. Henderson's got his hand up. Can we allow another comment? You want to let it or not?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson, if you'll come to the podium. Normally, we close public comment, but y'all have sat here long enough, so please come up.
Oh, yeah. I just want to point out that, once this vote is taken, and if it is in favor of the petition, it's going to be on the map. And I've shown, I've seen y'all point out several maps with other short-term rentals, which will make it easier for number two, because I've heard in other presentations, there's already one in the area. So again, I just hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
But in saying that, I can't see any other reason that would keep me from voting in favor of this. Keep in mind, I keep stressing, it's a probationary year if it's approved. In that time, it'll be the test for Mr. Porter if he can do things right. He will have to come before us if he continues to short-term rental this property in a year, if he's approved, to go further. So that's when it's incumbent. If you see a real problem, please report it. But after that long ramble, and I'm done for the night, I'm in favor of granting a one-year probationary period for a short-term rental license with a total of 30 nights over that calendar year, with a maximum of two vehicles parked off-street, with a maximum of four adults.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ms. Colley?
I appreciate the time of you staying here to support your neighborhood and to give your statements. They are heard. I would say to you that, as the ZBA, our part in this is that we make the decision, as long as there are no egregious violations, like he was reading before he came before us, or, you know, something that you had against him before he came in. Usually, we make the decision that you can have a short, that's all we decide, is yea or nay. The concerns that you have, I think, need to be taken to your council member and expressed. And I think the passion that you've given needs to be given to the council, because they are the ones who make the decision about this. And the stipulation of having it be a homeowner or something of an investor or something like that, I think that's the arena that that needs to be addressed. Because I'm with you, I agree with what you're saying. But in this particular incident, I see no reason not to grant Mr. Porter the right to four adults and two vehicles. Four people, that's not a party. Four people are not going to come in the neighborhood and just tear it up and zoom in through. So I think, in this case, there's nothing for us to say no to.
I agree with my colleagues. I would like to point out that Mr. Porter has requested four adults and two vehicles. And in reality, he has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. He could have requested six adults and three vehicles, but he didn't. He required, he requested less. Given that, I agree with my colleague.
I want to assure the residents that we have all read your letters in opposition. Me, more than once. I'm a slow reader, and I have to read it thoroughly. They were so heartfelt. If a vote, if we can make a vote on an emotion, I think everybody knows what it would be, but we have to follow the ordinance. And I realize how many people are here. You're not the first neighborhood that has shown up in force. Just want to let you know that. And I don't see any reason to deny Mr. Porter four people, two cars in this particular house. Trust me, I really looked so hard for a reason to deny. I did. But I don't, there is, other than your neighborhood being historic, I live in a historic district too. I completely understand. But I just don't see a reason that would provide this ordinance to go against what it is. And so I'm in support of it.
I'm in support as well. I was also likened as for trying to find ways to deny this, but I just don't see a reason to deny.
Thank you. That being the case, I'll read the motion as follows. In regard to ZBA 113-22, to approve the petition of Brian Porter for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of property located at 244 The Highlands, Zone R1, Council District 5, subject to the following conditions: a limit of four adults, a limit of two vehicles, a limit of 30 nights per year, a limit of one year. Accessory structures may never be occupied, and a business license must be obtained prior to engaging in short-term rental activity. Voting with Ms. Colley?
Yes.
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 Next case.
I mean, I, I wish I could. Could you send that to me or send it to us?
We got another case coming. We got another. Excuse me? Excuse me?
He told me to take my responsibilities a little more seriously.
Go ahead, next case.
Okay, we'll move on to ZBA 114-22. Chris Did Young petitions for a special exception from the off-street parking regulations on the property located at 6509 Highway 69 South, Zone B, in Council District 2. Here's an aerial view of that property, as well as zoning, and then a closer aerial view of this property. Right behind it is a Smoothie King, and then the little shopping center that Tokyo is in. Here's a view from the street. This is Aplico. And then here's a view of where the addition is going to be, right in here.
That was.
Okay. I'll get the point. The applicable regulations, specifically Section 2491 Special Exception, decrease in required parking, and then Section 24122 Off-Street Parking Requirements, which requires one per 120 square feet of building floor area. The petitioner is requesting a special exception to reduce the number of required off-street parking spaces from 31 to 18. The business has been operating in this location since 2014. However, due to a proposed addition, that's why parking is being triggered at this point. Petitioner is proposing 16 parking spaces on the property with two handicap spaces, so a total of 18. And the remaining 13 spaces currently exist on an adjacent property, so they will have an access easement that they will obtain. So here is just a zoomed-out version of the site plan, and then zoomed in so you can see it a little bit better. So within that kind of tan-yellow color, that's where that addition is going to be. And then you can see those 18 parking spaces, as well as the 13 that are going to be on that cross-access easement.
Wait a minute, excuse me. This, where you say "subject property"?
So that's the, that's Aplico. So that's the, this is the property.
That's not what, right, that's where I thought, okay. So ignore the subject property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just, that is basically outlining the property lines. So it's just saying, this is the subject property.
All right, thank you. Any questions to Ms. Hay?
No questions.
Just for the record, as we've discussed, we're looking at dealing with the parking requirements in the new zoning code, because as we have discovered, certain businesses don't need as much parking as we have.
Correct.
As we require. Any other questions for Ms. Hay?
And Jimmy Duncan is here. He's a designated agent to represent the case.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Jimmy Duncan, Duncan Kocher Associates. With me tonight is Chris Did Young. Chris owns Aplico, the subject property. As our application states, Chris has two employees, very little walk-in traffic. And if any of you have tried to purchase or know anyone that's tried to purchase any appliances over the last 18 months, inventory is a mess right now. So the intent with this is to create some additional space for storage at his facility. He's paying several thousand dollars a month right now for off-site storage, so this is going to get more of his eggs in one basket. 18 parking spaces on-site, which I'm confident, Chris is confident, those 18 spaces will more than support his needs on-site. But again, to meet this antiquated parking ordinance, we're going to furnish the 13 in an easement off-site during the LDP process. I'll answer any questions you have.
Mr. Duncan, so, all right, so you are going to have the cross-parking agreement?
Yes, sir.
You do have that. And how many spaces is that?
13.
13. And as you said, this is primarily to increase inventory, on-site inventory?
That's right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone here for or against this petition? Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, I think based on some of the comments that were made, all of us who've been on this board, from staff, I'm sure Mr. Duncan, in representing previous clients over the years, the parking formula is outdated. I think we can all agree to that. And we know the city has, for years, has looked to change it. We've had countless petitioners come before us with their representatives and basically stated, pleaded a very similar case. It's about the use and not just a formula based on the code. The actual use in the building is an appliance store. Anecdotally, I've been in them. Furniture stores are very similar, usually large footprints, sales floors. Not, the customer traffic doesn't mirror that. Even grocery stores and large retailers have this same challenge when they can show they don't need as much parking as the formula states they do. Based on that, I think it will be adequate parking. And the petitioner's representative went on to continue to add the 13 off-site through a cross-access easement. So I think that will satisfy the, what's needed.
Ms. Colley?
I agree.
I agree too. I'm familiar with this area. And Mr. Duncan, I do think this was at one time, probably before your time, of car wash area. And, okay. And hopefully we'll get our parking requirements in order, but I'm in favor of this petition.
I'm in favor of the petition.
I agree as well.
That being the case, I put up my glasses so I cannot read the motion. I'm tempted to just say whatever.
Here you go, right here.
I got it. In regard to ZBA 114-22, to approve the petition of Chris Did Young, is that right? For a special exception from the off-street parking regulations on the property located at 6509 Highway 69 South, Zoned B in Council District 2, and no conditions, well, I guess the condition would be a cross-parking agreement. With the condition that there's a cross-parking agreement, uh, voting with Ms. Colley.
Yes.
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 Any further business? I believe we'll resolve the issue of the- Oh, yeah.
And also, after that, uh, we need to approve the September 2021 minutes. I made one correction to the misspelling of Dr. Warwick's name, but other than that, do y'all have any issues?
Wait, I was reading, what, what?
The, the September 2021 minutes that I sent to y'all last week, we didn't approve those at the beginning of the meeting.
That's right, we didn't.
Yeah.
We didn't. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I think she's going to do it last.
I'm going to-
I'm sorry.
It's okay. We'll move on. Our last case of the night, it's been a long night. Uh, ZBA 116-22 Carl Sodergrin petitions for a variance from the residential setback regulations to allow the construction of a single-family home on the property located at 1218 14th Street, Zoned R3, Council District 4. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view. This may look a little familiar, because just north of this property came to y'all last month for a setback variance for their front setback. So, here's a view from the street, and also, this did come before you in 2018 as well. And then, just kind of a view from the back. Applicable regulations, Section 2435, yards unusable open space for front yards in the R3 zoning district, it does require a minimum 25-foot depth. And for side yards, it requires 14-foot aggregate width of both yards with a minimum width of five feet. The petitioner is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a single-family home within a similar footprint as the current non-conforming structure. Petitioner is requesting to build the home in line with the adjacent structures, which sit approximately 10 feet from their front property lines. Um, in addition, the request is to allow the side setbacks of approximately five feet from the eastern property line and four feet from the western property line. As I mentioned, this property was previously approved in 2018 for a similar concept, but the petitioner did not pull the building permits in time, so that approval did expire. The previous approval did have the following conditions, that a building permit must be obtained, they must remove that HVAC system from the public alley, or that unit, excuse me, and the building must meet fire codes. So, this is just a site plan showing the current structure with the proposed structure on top of it, so you can see exactly how far it's expanding. And this is the proposal. Now, this site plan has not been updated to reflect that 10-foot setback. This was the original proposal in which he was saying it was going to be about 26 feet back, but it's going to set it back significantly farther than the adjacent houses. And so, he would like to move it up to be in line with those houses.
Any questions to Ms. Hayes? Now, this, we have already approved this, he just didn't pull, pull the building permit in time.
Right, exactly. Um, we have one letter of support from the neighbor two houses down for this petition.
You need one vote or two votes? Just one vote? Do we vote to approve the petition, that'll take care of it all?
Yep.
Okay, all right, okay. Any questions to Ms. Hayes?
What did we determine about the HVAC unit?
So, it is sitting in an alley. Um, I'll go back. Now, these lines are not completely accurate in our system, but the HVAC system is currently sitting in the alley, so he's saying that that setback, um, and I believe this one is going to be the five-foot setback, four-foot setback, excuse me, that's going to be just enough if they do decide to put the HVAC system there, they can.
Is that the, is that the HVAC system we're seeing in town?
Yes.
Yeah, right there?
Right here.
I got it.
Is it currently? He's saying within this little setback here, he could sandwich it there if needed.
But either way, it's got to move out of the alley as it states.
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thanks.
Tell us what you know about short-term rental.
I learned quite a bit tonight about short-term rentals, and I don't want any part of it. My name's Carl Sodergrin, 1218 14th Street. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, basically, it's a net benefit as far as when the house was built, my research has brought me to 1940 or 1941. For whatever reason, there is a part of the house, it's four inches from the property line. So, we're proposing to move the house four feet from that property line, so there's a net gain there for, as far as setbacks go. Uh, the HVAC syst, the HVAC system was probably installed 1960s, 1970s, and has probably existed in that unused, by the way, alley. It's used firstly as a driveway. So, it has been there for some time, it's a package unit.
Have one, uh, if you could get together with your neighbor at some point in time, you might petition to vacate that alley.
I, I had, actually did talk to, uh, one of my neighbors, uh, that fronts 14th Avenue, it gets kind of confusing, being on 14th Street near 14th Avenue. And he, he uses the back alley, uh, for access. He could vacate it, however, the other two, the other one that is two away from the back alley, he uses the, the alleyway and needs it. He would not, he would not vacate it. So, it, we could vacate a portion of it and it still be usable by some of the others, but it's my understanding that it is kind of an all-or-nothing-
Marshall vacations are not favorable.
-type thing.
I, I was just an idea, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a good idea, I liked it.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
So, what, the conditions that we had on, question for staff, the conditions that we had in 2018, will all those remain the same? Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, but based on that, um, I, based on the, the, when the house was built, the petitioner mentioned Mr. Sodergrin, um, that was pre-zoning, so your setbacks that we're having to work with and the age of the home are, are issues. You are making a not-so, a, a bad situation better in this case. I don't think there's a lot else that can be done. I think it's an improvement, like some of the others that have been improved and gotten variances in the area recently. So, based on that, I'm in favor, as long as the conditions are met, um, in the petition.
Did you mention that the house and the lot predate the zone?
I think I did.
Okay. All right, uh, Ms. Colley?
I agree.
Uh, I agree.
I agree.
I'm in favor.
The motion is as follows, in regard to ZBA 116-22, to approve the petition of Carl Sodergrin for a variance from the residential setback regulations to allow the construction of a single-family home on the property located at 1218 14th Street, Zoned R3. Voting with Ms. Colley.
Yes.
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 Any other business?
Approve the minutes.
What?
Approve the minutes.
What was the minutes of the-
September 2021. Yeah.
Just one correction from, uh, Dr. Warwick, I mean, Dr. Ward to Dr. Warwick.
Do I have a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 2021.
Second? Have a second?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second, voting with Ms. Colley.
Yes.
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 Yes.